Good morning, folks. Good morning. All right, this is August 1st, 9:00 AM. Our city council meeting. And we're gonna call it to order. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Adama?
Here.
Councilmember Cabo? Councilmember George Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Jamie Clanton?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, if you'll stand, please.
Let's prepare our hearts for the presence of the Holy Spirit this morning. Father, we thank you for not on your new day, but for a new month. We honor you and we invite you into our meeting today, Lord. We thank you for giving us wisdom and counsel and guidance. We ask a blessing upon our mayor and council as we go forth to make decisions that will bring forth quality of life for the people that we are serving. And we thank you, Lord, not only for this meeting today, but we thank you for the students that are going back to school. Let us that you bless them and let it be a powerful, productive year for them and keep them safe in all of their ways. So we thank you, Lord, for this meeting of wisdom and direction and honor. We thank you for the opportunity we have to bless you through the work that we do and the service that we render to others. And we give you all the glory and the praise for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it? Thank you. All right, counsel, we're gonna move to the adoption of the city council agenda. If you take a second to peruse that and then we'll move forward. I'll take a motion for an acceptance.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about item number eight. I'm sorry, it's not eight. Number nine.
Okay.
At one point, we talked about breaking that into more than one issue or one item. And if we want to discuss it item by item, do we need to add it or can we just discuss it as one or two items separately without adding items to the agenda?
Okay, Mr. Attorney, your opinion?
I think when we have the discussion on these, I think that can be discussed at that time. As far as what the direction of counsel is, I acknowledge we had that conversation, I believe it was in the work session relating to this and whether or not it can be bifurcated. I continue to show it as one just because it's a compensation and that's the subject matter that's associated, even though we're dealing with an issue of the salaries of the mayor or an increase in the salaries of the mayor plus a change in the expenses. But that, when we get to that area, Mr. Turner, we can certainly discuss that issue. But because as it relates to what's going to be published, and that's really what we're talking about today, we're not talking about approval of any ordinance.
No, all I'm asking is, it's okay to break them out and discuss them separately without having to add items to the agenda. So if we can do that and consider them separately without having to add items in them, okay?
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July 16th meeting.
We're not on that one yet. Not quite. Almost. We're on the adoption.
Agenda. I'm sorry.
I think she meant.
That's what I meant.
No worries.
Agenda.
Second. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Now we move to the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July 16th, 2018. I'll give the same courtesy. Take a minute to peruse those, make sure that we have any addition or changes.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Just one addition for the record. I believe on the audit report, there were some recommendations for new policies to be implemented. I'd like to have that added to the minutes.
You'll have to be specific on that, councilwoman. I don't know.
There is a list of recommendations and policies in the audit that was presented to the council.
If I may, I believe that list correctly was listed in the audit report, which is part of the record. So I'm not quite sure what the request is in this case.
Well, it seems like the minutes said that, and this is not meant to be negative, but I believe it said that there were no findings and there were some findings. So I just wanted, for the record, that there to be, for it to be noted, that there were some findings and there were recommendations.
Well, in.
To fix those findings.
Yes, ma'am. I think in the terms of audit terms, a finding is a specific, is a specific item. A recommendation is completely different. So a finding is, has a certain connotation to it. So they're very specific that there were no findings seen against the city, but they did have recommendations. So in this context, the term finding versus a recommendation have two completely separate meanings. I mean, often times, they can be seen as being similar, but in this context where an audit, they are two complete, separate and distinct differences between the two. So I think the fact that he's saying there's no findings, I think that's a very specific term that speaks to the quality of the work that was done from a financial standpoint. The fact that he made recommendations, certainly it's a different connotation altogether. So I would ask that it stay as recommendations and let the term as no findings stand with his recommendations being there to pursue additional policies.
And why not, why don't we, would you suggest this, Ms. Adama, that we increase the minutes that he reviewed a list of recommendations in his presentation, which were discussed?
Yes.
Would that satisfy you? Because that's what was done. That was, that would.
Yes. Attorney Curry, I think that's a great idea. And if the record, if we can just note that, Madam Clerk, for the record.
What I would do is just after that, after the last sentence in the first paragraph, add that language to it. He said the audit was very smooth and he had no findings. He also discussed the various recommendations of Malden and Jenkins that were in the CAFR. Is that adequate for you?
And that's adequate. Thank you so much. Thank you, Attorney Curry.
Okay, counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion after reviewing the minutes of the July 16th meeting that we accept these, the agenda, accept the meeting as is.
All right, properly moved. Do I have a second?
I second it, but it's the minutes.
Minutes.
It's not as is. We did. We did.
What day is this?
I don't.
Yes.
Councilwoman Adama?
Councilman Turner, I think it's with the addition from Attorney Curry.
With the addition from our city attorney.
All right. Now properly moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. Properly moved. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Passes. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have three speakers. Fay Cofield, Dave Marcus, and Bernard Knight.
I have a couple of questions that I've been asked, one to ask from the community, and that is, why has the road stopped on, between Evans Mill and Lithonia Industrial? That road has not only stopped, but all of the equipment has been removed and it has turned into an ice sore. And we'd like to know why. Second of all, I'm very concerned about this continued attempt to increase salaries. The purpose of government is to represent the people and to represent the needs of the people. And it was, this was done by an election. Each one of you was appointed, was elected by the people. You knew what the salary was because you based what you paid to run for the office on that. You ran very good campaigns, some of you, and you spent a lot of money getting the job. And perhaps that, some of that money you spent getting the job might have been better saved, you know, so you could not have to worry about getting a salary increase. It's very concerning because I haven't really seen a lot of change from what we had under DeKalb County. Some of the projects that are being touted, like the one up on Brown's Mill and 124, 212, that project was approved by DeKalb County. I know because I was there and most of the community was against it. So we're getting the same thing we got under DeKalb. We didn't, we haven't seen any major changes. We've seen no major developments. We still only have three major supermarkets, which is Kroger on Panola, Kroger, the two stores on Panola. Walmart is not a supermarket. Walmart is what they call a hypermarket. So I'm very concerned about this thing about getting the salary increase. I think that this should wait. We should see some more development. We also are getting ready to start paying for the police and fire and everything else. So I have those concerns. And, you know, when you take a job, I spent 22 years working for the city of Atlanta, and every time it came time for a raise, they said, you knew what the job was when you took it, you knew what the pay was. So I'm opposed to increases in salary because this is not a job. This is a service to the people of the community with a bit of compensation. In many places, you only get what's called a stiping. So that is my concern, and I'm also concerned about why we are not seeing a lot of the growth that we were told was coming. I understand now that not only is the sports complex gone, but also the things that were going to come with the sports complex. And I don't understand why we can't get someone else, if they can't do it, why we can't get someone else to at least take up that retail portion of what was going to be built there since they don't own, they don't own or control the land. So those are my three concerns. And my major concerns right now are the salary compensation increases and why that road has stopped and the equipment has been removed.
Thank you.
Dave Marcus.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers.
Morning, sir.
There are rumors flying around, and I'm gonna ask you in a second to raise your hand or something since I know you can't comment. If the rumors are false, I'll just sit down. But they are that a billboard company is threatening to sue or has sued the city of Stonecrest to force it to allow the company's billboards on Ring Road at Mall Parkway. Further, the rumor says the city is in the situation due to a failure by a CH2M employee to respond appropriately to a permit request from the billboard company. If this is false, somebody shoo me away. So the cause in ensuring that similar problems do not happen again is one thing, and I have reasonable faith in the mayor and Mr. Harris that steps will be taken to make sure it doesn't happen. More important, I ask the city, led by the council, to fight this tooth, nail and pocketbook. Signage at the mall and in most commercial areas of Stonecrest has always been tasteful and subtle. It's amazing, if you actually go to the mall, drive around, look at the signs, I didn't think about it for a long time until I read the Stonecrest overlay zoning district and its design guidelines. And that, by the way, is a very good argument for such overlay districts. To not fight the billboard developer using every trick of the law would have a serious impact on the attractiveness of Stonecrest and the mall area. If they are allowed, other billboard companies may demand parity. They may claim that what happened was not an accident, by the way, I do not believe this, but they could come in and claim it wasn't an accident. Another company had preferential treatment and they should be given the same treatment. And we could see a plethora of billboards along I-20 and at the mall itself. If the billboards are allowed, mature trees can be taken down, if not trimmed, completely taken down, as happens on Georgia state highways, to allow views of the billboards. So I ask you to fight this matter tooth, nail and pocketbook. Second, in the name of transparency, I ask the city provide citizens with a list of all threatened litigation and all litigation that has been filed by posting such a list somewhere on the city's website and keeping it updated. While this pertains to legal matters, it is allowed by the Georgia Open Records Act, which states that matters of fact are not, what would the word be, redactable. They may be shared. Matters of opinion and strategy and so on from a lawyer to y'all could not be shared, but simply the matters of fact can be. And I think it's important for all of us to keep up with what's going on. I know at least two lawsuits, this one and maybe a threatened one, and that concerns me very much. Perfect timing.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Bernard Knight. We have had a zoning code now for almost a year, and I've had an opportunity both as an observer and a practitioner to see how certain aspects of it are functioning well or perhaps not so well. I will tell you that it is my opinion, and I think it is of other folks too, that we should reconsider whether we should have a community council process in the city of Stonecrest. City, DeKalb County has long had one. It was not carried forward into the zoning code. There is a problem with getting the word out, both to the business and the residential communities in this city about pending zoning applications. Where they are, what they involve, who is bringing them, what the benefits or the problems may be with them. The word is getting out way too late in the process. I would say that there are some things that could be done right now administratively to improve the situation. We could be posting signs earlier than notices of just of the zoning hearings, but of the community meetings that are being required. Now, the only requirement right now is that you have a community meeting by sending out postcards, notices to businesses or property owners or residents within 500 feet of the proposed project. I don't think that's adequate. But even there, we could have also a posting of a sign on the property notifying folks that this is going to happen. These meetings are not well attended. A lot of folks are not finding out about them. And I think really, there should be an emphasis on using what we have right now to try to get the word out. But I think in the longer run, we should have a text amendment which restores a community council process. I think you will see a much more, hopefully, a much more orderly zoning process where folks don't get surprised at the last minute by what's happening. I do want to follow up with Mr. Marcus and say that I certainly recognize that the city council cannot discuss strategy, litigation strategy, et cetera, in public. You've been instructed that, and I think, I'm sure, and that's wise. I will say, though, that there are certain matters of fact which ought to be disclosed, made available, publicized to the public when they occur, which would require no comments from the city council. Fact that lawsuits are being filed against the city, copies of the lawsuits, copies of demand letters, all of these ought to be made available to the public. I think they should be published on the city website. Now, certainly, some of the allegations may not be well founded. Certainly, it may be politically embarrassing, to be frank. But nevertheless, I think the public has a right to know rather than be surprised on the road by settlements which they might not agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, counsel, we're gonna move into our agenda items. Number one, intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County for election services.
Good morning.
Morning.
The city manager and city staff and as well as the city's attorney office has been working with DeKalb County to finalize the four IGAs that are on today's agenda. The first is the election services IGA. Michael, did you have specific comments? This, it is our opinion that this election services IGA is ready to go. There are two very minor cleanup items. For example, adding a fax number, which was removed in the last turn but needs to be added back. And there was one provision in here that was added by the county attorney's office. However, we believe that it was just a mistake because they did not even finish the Senate. So we just think it was a carryover from something. But we will get those two items cleared up and receive a final version. However, today, we did want to present this to you and let you know where we are in the process.
So Madam Attorney and Mr. City Manager, are we taking all four of these at once or are we separate?
I would prefer to separate them, please.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any questions from city council regarding the election services IGA? This IGA specifically discusses the county's and the board of elections responsibilities as well as the city's responsibilities as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In terms of compensation, in the event that there's an election countywide or districtwide for the county district five or whatever, and the city happens to overlay that same election with the municipal election, is that something that will be charged for since the county would bear the expenses already negotiable?
The way that the compensation is structured in this agreement is that the city pays the county all costs incurred in connection with any city elections. So any portion that is attributable to the city, the city has to reimburse the county for that cost.
Okay, but in the event, well, I guess that will be a matter determinant of whether that expense would be occurred since the election would take place anyway on the county's behalf, and the city does one simultaneously. And the cost should not, well, it should be no additional cost.
It's normally, we normally pay for it, but it's normally less if they are having an election because they're having one. If we have one of our own, then we would pay all of the costs.
I'm saying.
For the machines and the training and all that other people, we get a break on it if they are having an election.
Okay. So it's a shared, so it's a shared cost? Okay.
It's a shared cost.
Got it.
For example, in the last council elections, we actually had to put them on the ballot even though there weren't anybody running in opposition because of the referendum for Splotch, the city was invoiced for its cost, the county's cost associated with doing that. I don't recollect what it was, but you have the opportunity to look at the invoice and you have the opportunity to complain if you feel that you're, you know, being overcharged.
Okay.
So if there's an election that we're not part of, and it's just like this past election where there was no city business on there, we didn't pay for any of that?
That's correct.
And so this agreement doesn't require us to do anything different than that?
That's correct. If there's no city involvement whatsoever, then there's no cost of city.
So from this point, Madam Attorney, do we, is this a second read or do we actually vote?
We will not be voting on this today. What we wanted to do was to present it to mayor and council, and we will go back after today's meeting and work with the county attorney to do these two minor cleanup items and present the final version.
Very good.
At the next council.
And if I could add, so we've been working with the county. So their intent right now is to take, once we, they've sent them over to us with their last set of amendments, we're going through, we're going through our review now, send, make sure we get it from our council, make sure our council looked at it and they're okay with it before it goes to their county commission for consideration. That's kind of the next step in the process. They're looking to bring it to their county commission sometime later this month. So prior to that stuff being taken, make sure that we've had a chance to look at it, the final draft, and make any additional comments that we felt were appropriate before they submit it back to theirs. And again, for the majority of them, comments have been relatively minor, as you'll see, with the exception of one of the IGAs.
Good. Counsel? All right, excellent. Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is the 911 dispatch IGA. And again, we have been working with city staff, city manager, county attorney. The city manager has been working with the county staff as well to finalize this IGA. The county attorney sent us back the latest revised version of this IGA, and this, in our opinion, is ready to go. Again, there's one minor cleanup item, including a fax simile number, and other than that, we had no further comments.
I just have a general question about all the IGAs. So these are services that the county is providing for our residents on behalf of us. So basically, the millage still goes to them until we take these services on. And I don't, maybe your office, city manager, is getting this information, but do we ever have any reports that come from the county that kind of tells us, you know, this is what you're putting in, this is what you're getting out? You know, because, I mean, technically, it's, even though it's an intergovernmental agreement, it's a contract for services. It's just what another government agency. So I don't personally, I would like to see something maybe each month or each quarter that tells us, here's where your money is going, here's the amount of service we're providing on behalf of the city, you know. So, and I don't know if we want to take it as far as have those entities present to the council at meetings, but just kind of some kind of regular report so that we can monitor the activity because, I mean, it's still money that's being paid for these services.
Yeah, and I can tell you, no, we haven't received anything formal. We have been, we had requests, particularly with our roadway, roads and right-of-way maintenance. We've been kind of going back and forth with them to find out exactly what their, what cost, how much money they have allocated toward the right-of-way areas solely within the city of Stonecrest. The challenge from their standpoint is they don't necessarily have the, our footprint etched out of what their receivables are. So we've been working with them to try and get them to break that out and get an idea of exactly what, you know, how much, how much of that millage is going specifically to Stonecrest. We have been having those conversations, in fact, meeting with the county manager of next, hopefully by the next week. And that's part of the conversation we're gonna be having by having some more tangible information so we can start determining what the cost would actually look like.
Right. Well, that'd be something I'd be interested in having on a consistent basis, presenting it to the council. And not just for comparison purposes, but just so that we know, you know, what kind of service we're being provided for, you know, the money that's being put in.
And certainly, when we start the process of preparing to take on some more of these services, it's certainly, it's helpful for us to be able to know what kind of cost you're going into it right now.
Sure. And I would imagine that the county may not be very happy about providing that information if that is the first impression, is that they just want this for comparison purposes. But I think maybe, I don't know, maybe too late to package it differently at this point. But I sincerely would like to see outside of a comparison purposes for taking services over, I seriously would like to know on a monthly basis, as you continue to provide those services to our residents, how is that service? How, you know, are the residents receiving the services like they should be? You know, we need to monitor those services because they are providing that on our behalf. So, you know, although we go into an agreement to do that, if, if there's nothing to measure that service against, it's not really about comparing to take it over, it's just something measurable so we know, you know, what kind of service is being provided.
No, it's a great point, you know, and it's, the issue have, we'll talk about it a little bit regarding police, about identifying what the current level of service is and what the cost associated with that is. So those have been some of the conversations that we've been having with them. So, great point.
Don't hesitate to ask them to present for the council. Maybe that'll.
It may be, it may be the way.
And let me know if you need my assistance with that. Because that's a, actually, that's really good, councilwoman. It's just a super heavy lift from the county. Sharing has not been their strong suit with, not only with us, but, you know, with all. But what you say makes, it's solid.
Well, I know they do present to some other cities in the county continually on a monthly basis. They have a report.
Yeah, and they do. Brookhaven get a report.
Yeah, and they do Brookhaven get a report, Dunwoody get a report.
Get a report and a presentation.
Yeah. And then I guess, I'm sorry, were you done, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Like, for police services, the millage that we're paying now is 5.092, I think for every $1,000 or something like that, based on the tax digest. And so, my question is, based on that information, that's set, that's already set that we're paying, because Dunwoody's not paying anything because they currently have their own police departments, same thing with Brookhaven. And so, but we here at Stonecrest, we're paying that millage right now currently. So, back to what Councilwoman Cabo was saying, if we're paying that millage already, and it's already etched in stone, I'm confused in where's the leverage for negotiation on these contracts? And I know there is some, but because we're already paying that, you know, what are we, what are we trying to negotiate other than, are we going to decrease services? Are we going to increase services? You know, just what does that mean? Because they're already providing some level of service. We just don't know what that level of service is. But what I would like to know, taking it even further, is, you know, that 5.092, what are we getting for that right now today?
So, let me start, Mr. City Manager, and I'll let you chime in. And as a matter of fact, Mrs., Madam City Attorney, and Mr. City Attorney, and Mr. City Manager, correct me if I am wrong, and I want some clarity on it too, Councilwoman, so good question. What is being paid today in that millage rate is not being paid by Stonecrest citizens. It's being paid by, paid by Stonecrest citizens to DeKalb County, not paid by Stonecrest citizens to Stonecrest. And I think that millage rate, and I could be wrong also, Councilwoman, I think that millage rate is in the eight, nine range. I don't know if it's in that five range, but you could be right. But the point I want to make is that that's not money that's coming out of the citizen's pocket going to us, because that service is still with the county. That's money coming out of the citizen's pocket going to the county, because they're still, they are the ones that are, you know, providing that service. And the reason I wanted to give clarity on that is because even through our campaign for coming, becoming a city, oftentimes, people thought that they would be double paying. And you're not double paying. Whoever delivers this service is the one that collects the revenue. So, since the county is delivering the police service, they are the one that's collecting the, the police revenue. The reason this is important, Councilwoman, is because when we take over, police service is full, then we set and determine the millage rate, which I'm sure you already know. And at that time, we may determine, you know, from a financial standpoint, the millage rate either matches what they've been doing, but what Brookhaven and some others have found out is that they could offer those services for lower than a millage rate. The point that I wanted to make, and I'll hand it back over to the city manager, is that we're, two things. One, we're not double paying, meaning that the citizens aren't paying us and paying the cap county. And two, is that we're at a, what I call a flat rate right now because we have a zero millage at this point for services that are happening with regards to Stonecrest. Matter of fact, it's cheaper to live in Stonecrest than in any other city in DeKalb County. But I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. City Manager.
No, just to your point, Councilwoman, so part of the determination would be made as we go forward is to determine what that level of service would be, what we, what we feel is appropriate within our city, and to determine from, of that millage, how much of that, you know, is that, is that same amount appropriate for what sort of service we want to provide, or can it be less? Can we provide the same services for a lesser millage, or perhaps we want to have enhanced services beyond that? So, as we go through the process and make determination and looking at the feasibility of bringing it on and actually going through the studies to find out exactly what the cost would be and what the cost for, not just for the city, for the citizens would be, then we have to go through. Those issues would be fleshed out.
Yeah, I had a meeting with Tax Commissioner Irvin Johnson to talk to him about, you know, this millage rate. So, we all live in the county, right?
Right.
So, if we live in the county, we're paying for those services, right?
Right.
So, that five, that millage rate, we are paying it right now because we live in the county.
Right. If you live in the county, and however, to the mayor's point, if you live in certain cities where they're providing those services-
Right.
-paying a millage for that service, but that millage may be paid to the city as opposed to the county.
Exactly. And I agree with, with the mayor that there may be a time down the road where perhaps, you know, it may be more feasible to provide some level of our own police services, because that's what some of the other cities are doing, and it seems to be working. But of course, you got to look at many other factors. But just looking at police services in general, it may be a time when we can, you know, deliver services maybe for, for, you know, $4 versus $5.09. Just, just in agreement with the mayor on that, that, that might be something to take a look at down the road.
Okay. Counsel, go ahead.
All these IGAs were for 50 years with an option every year?
The exception would be the police services IGA as drafted.
Just worried Smithon a little bit. Here you say enforcement calls. Is that specific as to what type of enforcement calls? And the reason I bring that up is that we handle our own code enforcement calls. So, should that specify which enforcement calls is in the title and the purpose?
In talking about the 911 dispatch IGA.
Right. Right. Since animal services and enforcement call with the DeKalb County government is what it's in reference to. So, are you speaking of all enforcement calls? Are there just law enforcement calls, enforcement calls relative to animal service? It's just that I don't think it's clear. Perhaps it is, but it's not clear to me.
Both, both. You have your own code enforcement officers, which are sworn, who can go do that, and you also will have the police department who will be sworn officers. And if they come across a code violation, they too can also ticket that. So, it's, you know, it's just part of, part of the service. They don't, they will, they don't say, oh, you're burning up your front lawn, we're not going to do anything about that, you know, we'll wait the city to do it. No, they would take care of that, too. It's just-
I was just asking, should there be a distinction? You just leave it to include all?
Just leave it to include all.
And Mr. Councilman, if I could, in section 2.5, it kind of gives a further definition of what, what they, how they define call. So, from this standpoint, call means a 911 call originating within the city's boundaries that requires a dispatch and response of police, fire, suppression apparatus, emergency medical services providers, animal, animal services, and enforcement units, and some other non-emergency response such as water and sewer trucks, sanitation, et cetera. I hear what you're saying, you know, at what point does, could that also include our code enforcement? Typically, if it's something that raises to that rank with the call 911, typically, it's a police action and not a, particularly a code violation issue.
Okay.
We could certainly ask them about, make sure we clarify that language a little bit on this issue.
That makes sense.
And just to also clarify, while the IJ is, IGA is for 50 years, it's actually one year renewable each year, and you can terminate with 180 days' notice if you wish to take over the services.
Okay. Modify? Just terminate?
Terminate. You can always go back and renegotiate if you want to take different services out. The big, the big issue is the 911. And if you look at where you get the, the information relating to the response time and whether or not you feel that that is adequate for the residents and whether or not it can, by your joining somewhere else or doing it yourself, would increase the response time then, or make it better than, that's usually what you end up looking at. But things like, you know, animal services, all those types of things, if you want to do your own shelters, you can do that. But there's, there's certain efficiency in particularly these types of things that are taking place to have the county do it.
Okay.
Good.
If you don't mind, Mr. City Attorney, I want to get some clarity also, and I want to piggyback on Councilwoman Cabo and Adoma. So, when we finish these first round of services, which are the major services that they're, that the county is providing for our citizens, citizens are paying the millage rate to the county, county delivers the services. We're clear. Now, with that, that means that there's no raise on our side, there's no raise on the Stonecrest side saying, hey, you know, we're going to bump this up a couple of points or whatever. It stays flat the way it is, correct?
Correct.
All right. At some point in time, and Councilwoman Adoma raised this issue, which I, which I thank you for that because I want to make this crystal clear with everybody. Our next order of business is to start and have our own police service. And that means starting at a certain level, then growing it, you know, full-fledged, but growing it properly, full-fledged. So, with that, my question is this, do we take a, if she will allow me to use this term, Councilwoman Cabo, and stick them in the middle of it? So, and it says, okay, now we're going full-fledged police. But I'll give you an example, Councilwoman, like Tucker, they contract with the county, but those county vehicles say Tucker Police. I think that is the genius, actually. They didn't have to capitalize the cars, they get a good brand, they know what is happening on the end of it. So, my question to you, Mr. City Manager, is that that goes beyond what we're talking about here. This is, this is covering what they're doing today. If we start to do something of that nature, then we move into a different ballpark.
That's correct. You know, for right now, this is to keep things as they are, you know?
Got it.
Of course, in the last year, we've been in operation, nothing has changed, they've been required to continue to maintain those services. This is a process we have to go through to make sure we have a formalized agreement in place to make sure that they are providing the services and what those level of services are. Going forward, you're right. I mean, you know, we can do things with vehicles. If we want to enhance the current level of service that we have in right now, you know, that's above and beyond what this agreement calls for. But that's certainly is part of the conversation because that happened as, as, between staff and council.
Okay. Good deal. Counsel? All right. That was two, so.
Moving on to the-
Can you tell me when you intend to bring these back? Are they just discussion only? You don't know when they're coming back?
Our intention is for discussion today, but to, to bring three of them back as soon as possible, hopefully by the next council meeting. The third item on the agenda, the third IGA, is the police services IGA. And this is the one, this is the IGA, in our opinion, that we need further clarification. The county sent us a turnback that had some changes, and they were broad, and we just need to drill down. And we need to, in discussing this with the city manager, he is going to be working with the county staff to get some, a little more clarity.
Yeah. You know, and I can tell you, some of the things we did, we had a meeting, we met back in May, myself, Mr. Joyner, we met with their staff. Again, we consider this kind of phase one IGAs, the first four, police, fire, E911, and elections got kind of thrown in. So, we had that initial meeting, and we kind of came up with what we felt was a strong draft IGA for all of these. And again, as Ms. Cosgrove has mentioned, the vast majority of them, there weren't any substantive changes. However, on police, there were several areas where they did make, we felt were substantive changes. Notably, they added a provision where the county reserves the right to charge the city for non-basic services due to emergency and or exigent circumstances. It was a very broad statement, and, you know, and I get it. I mean, if, if, you know, we've seen issues that have arisen in other cities, riots, Charlottesville being the most recent, one of the most recent examples, and how, you know, the stress and strain and costs that can be afforded to a city or to a county for providing those services. So, I think they're looking for provision with that. However, there wasn't any detail on our role in determining what the level, that level of service should be, what those costs would be. So, we want further clarification there. It's one of the big ones that jumped out. Again, to a point made earlier, further define what the, what the current level of service is. We had talked in our initial draft about designating X number of officers, X number of vehicles, patrolling within the area at any given time. So, we have something, some bit of a litmus that we can kind of gauge it by, level of services, and they pulled, they backed off away from that. So, we want to work through and find out, make sure we have a determination on what the expectation for citizens of Stonecrest can be at any given time within our, within our boundaries. And then some of the other ones were reporting requirements. We'd asked for some, a monthly reporting requirement, they pulled that off, as well as a liaison position, which they're providing, but it, for whatever reason, they took out the formal language behind it. So, we want to just kind of clarify those things. I certainly don't think it's anything insurmountable, but we just need to get clarification on a couple of items. I've actually heard back from Mr. Williams with the county, and we're trying to schedule a meeting for late this week or first part of next week to kind of walk through and flesh out these issues. But that, this was, with the exception of the other three, we felt were, you know, again, the minor changes were, were, were non-substantive. But we felt with this one, it needed some additional conversation between us and the, and the county.
Quick question. What data is available for review and evaluation, existing data for the city of Stonecrest?
Good question. You know, so we started a couple of months ago of meeting with the liaison representative from the, from the DeKalb County, and we're doing monthly meetings with them. They come in and they provide us with data, statistics, what's going on from a crime standpoint within the Stonecrest footprint, which has been great information. I think you had the opportunity to attend one of the last ones.
Last week, well, week before.
Right. So, you kind of got an idea of kind of what the scope of information they can provide for us, what some of the crime statistics are within our areas, some of the trending areas, what the hotspots are they're looking at. So, that type of information, they've been really good about being able to provide for us.
I think I was thinking about response rates and things like that, and maybe that's not available right now since we're in the city, but-
Yeah, it is, and they have. We, again, that's, that's typically included in their report.
Yeah.
And their response rate, their rate of resuscitation as far as being able to deal with and bring, bring cases-
Right.
-to adjudication and finality. They talk about, they provide those rates as well. And I can tell you, based on the conversation that we've had, they are meeting the national average. So, it's a good message that, in fact, we've talked about myself, Mr. Alejandro, our code manager, and helped to coordinate those-
As if we're negotiating.
-work with our communications to get more of that information out.
Right. And if we're negotiating, I guess where I'm going with this, if we're negotiating, you know, an intergovernmental agreement, then I'd like, and I know you probably are, but I'd like to see us try to negotiate something on, you know, a high, a little higher level than where we are now countywide, if that's possible. Because I'm, you know, when I, I don't have anything to compare it to other than this is what the county is doing.
Right.
So, I'd like to see something a little bit more specific, if, if it's available.
Yeah. And that's where we want to make sure we have a clear, defined understanding of what that level of service should be-
Exactly.
-going forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Ma'am.
The final IGA we were presenting today was the Fire Rescue Services IGA. And again, in this one, when we received the turnback from the county, we were, we were fine. There were just minor comments, and this one is, is ready to go. We had no further additional comments after their review. Well, thank you.
All right.
As soon as we get back in touch with the, with the county regarding the police, we'll bring that information and re-report back to the council at that time.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
You-
Thank you, Madam. All right. Okay, with number five, ordinance of the city of Stonecrest adopting additional taxation regulations in chapter 24.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this would be, this would constitute a first read of this ordinance, ordinance of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, adopting additional taxation regulations in chapter four of the city code. These regulations have been drafted by Fincher Denmark, one of the attorneys there. And really, the purpose of this is to codify into our city code the various aspects that are either in the charter or state law relating to ad valorem taxation and our limitations on that, but also the means by which taxes are due, how they get collected if they're delinquent, and the assessment and levy thereof. That would be article two. Article three discusses mobile homes and the taxation of getting details, decals in order to levy a tax on mobile homes with respect to those unless there's an exemption that's available to them under state law, requires reports of mobile park owners in order to indicate to us what's available or who's available and what the ownership of it is. Then there's- ownership of it is. Then there's the depository financial institution's business license tax, which you will receive next year for the first time. Isn't that correct, Mr. City Manager? The financial institutions tax, there is nothing budgeted for 2018, but you will get a payment in 2019.
2019, that's correct.
Or 2018.
Yep.
With regard to that. And that codifies that, and also the fact, it also creates the levy of those taxes. And it's purely determined by state law as far as what your share of that is. They make the computation at the Department of Revenue, and they will send the check. Then there's the excise tax on short-term rentals of rooms, lodging, and accommodations, which are really, relate to the hotel motel tax, as it is presently provided for and levied for, in which it's a tax of 5%, 3% of which is retained by the city in connection with its budget, and 2%, which is now going to the DeKalb County nonprofit that we have contracted with in order to provide tourism services for us. As you may recollect, in the, in the charter, in the new charter that was drafted last year, we were going to go from 5% to 8%. Since that charter never made it to the floor, we are still at 5%. And this is an item we have to put on our list for the next General Assembly in order to create the legislation from the General Assembly to permit us to go from, from 8, excuse me, from 5% to 8% with regard to that. And then, once that's done, then there'll be more discussions concerning how the tourism dollar is spent, and whether or not you continue to third-party out that effort, or bring it in, bring it inside with your own Section 501(c)(3) organization to do that for yourself relating to that. There's an excise tax on rental motor vehicles. Those, that is a, that is a tax for every motor vehicle that is leased, whether it's by a car dealer, or by Hertz, or by whomever that's there. I don't know what's budgeted for that amount this year, but that is a tax that is collected by the city with regard to that. And that is, those are the items that are in there for the first read. So this will come up again at the next meeting for a second read in order to be adopted and inserted into the city code.
Mr. Curry.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, you have a question?
As well. You're first.
I know we were contemplating making an adjustment to the charter for the millage rollback, to accommodate for the millage rate rollback. So that's not accounted for in this ordinance?
No, it's not accounted for in this, and it's also that, that particular home rule ordinance is not being presented today to you. And frankly, I didn't, I looked at it, we probably should go ahead and do it and recirculate it back, because what that would enable you to do, that to the extent that you take over any service and there's a rollback to the county, then you can, you can add it to your property tax base. Right now, you're limited to 3.35%, which is what's in the ordinance, which is what's in the charter. So in reality, if you were to take over police services, you would have to be able to do it within that 3.35% absent a home rule change.
Right.
Now, your charter provides for a referendum, if you so choose, but it can be, can be changed under home rule. To the extent that you are, to the extent that the residents are paying the county for a service at a certain level, and you take that service over and can provide it at that level or less, then the resident is not, is not impacted negatively associated with that. And I think what you, what was found in Brookhaven and probably Dunwoody, the level of service was so much greater based upon taking those same dollars that the citizens were paying, that they were able to provide it. The only difference between the, the north side of the county, which has a much higher valuation for ad valorem tax purposes than what you have in the southern side of the county. But I think, given what's taken place economically, I would assume that that digest is growing.
So I was asking that to say, should we hold this until we have the home rule amendment? I mean, is it, and I know we have to go through public hearing, it's 60 days and all that, but is it, is it
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessary. And frankly, what I think I would do is, is modify the ordinance that if it is adopted as a home rule amendment, then the city code 2 would then be amended. This section of the city code would be amended to, to, to read as whatever that amendment would be.
Okay. And then we can just leave that language very general, so that in the event the millage rate ever changes from here to the end of time, we wouldn't have to keep going back and changing this. I guess that's what my point is.
That's right. Well, I would, you know, this is, this is what it is. And if we have to, you know, because if you're gonna, if you're gonna change the millage rate, increase your cap, which is what we're talking about, really talking about what we're doing, then in such event, you would have to go through the home rule amendment or do the referendum.
Time's up.
Is that my phone?
Put your own timer on.
It's 10 o'clock, by the way.
You gave yourself...
All right.
I have.
You're good, counselman. All right, so do it tomorrow.
Which one of us? Just a quick question. You mentioned that the city have an option to bring in their own 501(c)(3) to manage that, what, 5%? Can you elaborate just a little bit on what that looks like?
Well, it would be, it would be a, a separate organization which would be controlled by the city. And there's a, there's a special exemption process with respect to governmental-supported 501(c)(3), which makes the process for getting it to qualify as a 501(c)(3) very easily. You have, for purposes of the tourism dollars that you have, you can't just bring them in, and I've seen this done, just bring them in and then apply them however you wish to do it, but it actually needs to be done through a 501(c)(3) agency. So if you, you know, as you're doing right now, you're sort of lumping all of your monies in with other cities in DeKalb County that are participating with this. And, you know, you may be getting your share, you may not be getting your share, you may be getting more than your share of what the tourism dollar is. It's just, it's a means by which then you can direct your own tourism dollars.
At what point will we continue the conversation about this process?
I would suggest that you start to consider it at the time that the home rule amendment passes, and then go forward with it, because you're gonna have this additional 3%.
Just clarification. You said that the financial institution deposit, with the depository of the financial institution would be exempt from 2018? Is that just starting date of 19, or they're exempt for 2018?
Well, the way, the way, no, the way that it worked is that the 2000, let me, I'm doing this from, from memory, is that the amounts that were to be paid in 2018 on all of the deposits, I guess, average deposits for 2017, since we were actually started business in the middle of 2017, so we missed 2018. So 2019 will be the first year in which we will get the tax based upon the 2018 deposit levels.
Got it.
That's it, good folks? All righty.
Okay.
Okay.
No action.
That's our first read.
That's right. Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. We'll go to number six for Contract for Quikit Solutions Incident Management and Business Continuity Plan. I'll take that. Counsel, this is what I think is the fair and right thing to do. This is a really, really critical platform for the City of Stonecrest. And how we set out with this from the beginning is how we can gauge where we're going for years to come. And as we put together our City of Innovation and Excellence, the brickwork and the foundation piece of it has to be right from the start. So I wanted to throw this out at council and see if this is the, the fair place to go. Since this is my initiative, and I've taken great opportunity to investigate it, know where we're going vision-wise, and what needs to happen in this end of it. I think the Quikit solution organization is, I mean, they're, they're first-class, and they're a professional services organization. I have to, to balance that with a couple of things. One, making sure we are getting best-in-market solutions, and to make sure what we implement is in agreement with the city manager and staff. Because putting something together this complex in this long term, I want to make sure that city manager Harris is, is right in line with he and I about where we're going and what we're doing, because it's operational for the city, it's construction-wise with regards to, to access for citizens, and it brings us an unprecedented brand. And this is why it's the City of Innovation and Excellence. So having said that, and looking at the framework for what we're doing, what I would like to do, counsel, is to set this opportunity out for an RFQ, because I want to make sure that we, we hadn't missed one turn, or one piece, one stone unraveled. So with regards to the contract for Quikit, what I'm, what I would like to do is to entertain a motion to send out these qual, this for a RFQ request for qualifications.
Let me see. Before you go there, I had some questions about it.
Okay.
With what Quikit is to provide for us, what are we getting now? And where are we deficient in that area?
So let me give you some clarity. They haven't provided anything for us now. What has happened is that the assistant city manager and I, Mr. Joyner, we have gave a deep dive on what these requirements are with regards to where we're going operationally, technically, and marketing-wise. That has to match where, two things. It has to match what the city manager's operation and opportunities are, and it has to match the desires of council. So instead of contracting with this particular solution provider right now, I'm saying let's take it out to RFQ.
Yeah, I understand they are not on board. What I'm saying is that there's a service that they are to provide. You're asking them to provide. Are we getting a service? Yeah, are we getting that service already, and it apparently is deficient, otherwise we would need to bring on someone else? So who's providing similar service with the city for us now?
So let me try to answer that and make sure I answered it in the right way, that I'm satisfying your question. It is not one specific thing. So the City of Innovation and Excellence is a, a total comprehensive program with regards to our operations, our communication with our citizens. A part of that module is smart city. Another part of that module is just total operations. So we have all of that as we sit today, other than a built smart city component that's separate, that's coming. So to specifically answer your question, we have these different components right now as we sit for code enforcement, all of these particular things. But they don't talk. They don't, from, I know this is rudimentary on my side, but those systems don't speak to each other coherently. Now, to be a complete City of Innovation and Excellence, that needs to happen. Now, does that happen with regards to Quikit Solutions? Does that happen with another, you know, organization that's out there? Or does it happen within our own organization here? I think the only true way to be able to find that out is to see what some other offerings are. Did I, did I?
That answered the question.
Answered a long way to the question.
That answered the question.
I wrote you a book. I wrote you a book.
I had to get a feel for the need for this.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, see it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, do we currently have a vetting process or a policy in place to evaluate these types of technology solutions? And if so, what is their area of expertise in cybersecurity? And back to Councilman Turner's, I think all of this need to be included when, if we bid it out, is what is the difference between Citizen Serve, which we're currently using?
Right.
And this particular product, or this particular solution? Because we do have Citizen Serve, and it's my understanding, we just kind of implemented all of that just recently. And so my question is, you know, we need disaster recovery, we need redundancy, but not at the risk of failing to do our own due diligence, as you just said. So one of the things that I would be highly suggesting, because I'm uncomfortable with what I've read in this particular contract, although I know we need a solution that works, but I suggest we temporarily use Citizen Serve until we've done two things. Number one is, we need to engage the Stonecrest citizens. We need to beta-test whatever it is they're doing. Maybe even have a committee of two people from each district who can use whatever it is they're trying to design for us before we make a major purchase. And I think we need to learn our lesson from it, the Atlanta incident, the DeKalb County water incident, that it seems extremely important to do our own due diligence. And we look at the Equifax breach, $484 million, the Atlanta airport breach, and the list goes on. It costs money when we don't do our due diligence. So, but we can't do due diligence if we don't know what it is that we want, and do we have the area of expertise in-house to maintain that. This current agreement is mentioning that the, I think it says that the city manager and the mayor would determine if a breach has been made. And, and I guess when I look at this, I'm, I'm looking at the FBI, they have their process, the vendor have their process, but what is our process? And we're gonna need someone to be able to manage the auditing process. And I'm not talking about financial auditing. I'm talking about data auditing, and I don't see where we have that expertise in-house. So when we bid it out, Mr. Mayor and counsel, we need to clearly know what it is that we want. And I highly suggest that we beta-test, and we use our own citizens to see if what they're proposing, if it's something that we need to purchase.
Okay. Let me address as much as I can remember. One is that, I'll say, I'll say this part again. We should put this out for requests, for qualifications. I said that, you know, from the beginning. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying now. I'm not saying for us to enter into a contract with Quikit Solutions. I'm saying that we need to put this out for requests for qualifications. Second thing I mentioned was that the, the primary reason I wanted to do that was to make sure we had best-in-class people, best-in-class companies, to bid on what this particular City of Innovation and Excellence service is, which is the coherent collaboration of all of what we have in-house to the citizens and to council. Point number four, I'm very familiar with what we use with regards to Citizen Serve and the other applications that we have in-house, because I'm here every day, and I, I know what they're doing. That's why I mentioned I didn't want to have any interruption of service whatsoever with regards to how we operate in a city. Fifth, if we're gonna create the City of Innovation and Excellence, which we are doing, whether it's Quikit, whether it's IBM, no matter who it is, our piece of it, the largest piece of it, is to make sure we have the proper integration with regards to all the things that you mentioned, councilwoman, that's added in this opportunity. So what would we be doing today? What we will be doing today is to send this opportunity out for requests for qualifications. We know what the baseline is already with regards to where we're going with this. We learned that, quite frankly, through Quikit and our own research for more than a year now. So what we would be doing is bringing in and entertaining other firms to see where they sit with regards to their offer for the, the City of Innovation and Excellence. So it encompasses everything you mentioned, councilwoman. along with making sure we have best-in-class folks for what we're trying to do.
Well, I agree, but, Mr. Mayor, are we going to accept the vendor's word? And I think what I'm saying is we need an expert to vet this solution. And I think you probably agree with me on that. Because it's going to take a cybersecurity expert, preferably in-house, to manage these types of solutions. And if you look at, if you do a little research, you'll see that those that are most functional and effective have that particular expert in-house. And I don't know if, you know, if accepting the vendor's word is all that we need.
Why are you saying that, Councilwoman? Why are you saying that I'm accepting the vendor's word? When I've said like three times. This is research that I've done myself. This is research that I've done with regards, even with the assistant city manager and this company. So what I'm saying, Councilwoman, what I'm saying is that if we send this out for RFQ, a request for qualifications, then we'll get back everything that you're mentioning here, including the cyber person, if that's needed or not, including integration with regards to what is happening here in the city and using this software or not using the present software that we have. So it's not to a point where I'm accepting what the vendors are saying. And if you will indulge me for a second, because I have a technical background myself. I've been AAA certified and I've been A-plus certified from Cisco, Novell, and several large companies. So I have a technical background. I can stand with the best of them with regards to where we're going. But that's not what I do every day. But this is what Quikit and other companies do every day. So all I'm saying, Councilwoman, is that let's take the information that we have from some very competent people that do this every day, that's certified with the government and everything, and send it out for a request for qualifications. Let's see what we get back, and then we continue to move forward from there. That's the only thing I want to do today. There's only permission I'm asking from council. Not to sign a contract, not to drill down on every inch of detail, but to send out the information that we have today for qualifications so we can see who else we get back. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and I agree, Mr. Mayor, we do need to send it out. But when we send it out, we need to know what it is that we need. We're asking them to, we're asking them to deliver something. So my question is, we have to be clear on what it is that we want them to deliver. And I think you understand that.
I do, and I'm clear on what I want them to deliver. I am crystal clear on what I want a particular vendor to deliver. And that's the part that I'm saying to you all, to council. I know exactly where we're going with this. I was the one that thought this particular piece up, so I've been working on it for a while.
I understand, but what I'm reading in the master services agreement and the other documents, it doesn't seem like that we're going in that direction. And I know you're saying you understand it, but what I've got on paper here, it's clear that we have to bring in a whole lot more expertise to make this happen. That's all I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just chime in for just a second, you know, I think it's, I want to make sure, again, for the benefit of the council as well as the public, you know, we do have the expertise in-house. I mean, through, you know, with our partnership with InterDev, who handles our GIS and our IT management, beyond just our onsite staff with Mr. Ivy, the company itself, we have their resources, and they provide IT services for numerous cities and municipalities throughout the United States, not just in Georgia. I mean, they have a wide range of cities that they provide services to, to address these very issues. So, you know, issues like disaster recovery, you know, we do have provisions in place already. So a lot of those things are in place. To the mayor's point, I think what we're looking at, kind of filling in the gaps and the holes where it currently exists and make sure we do have a fully integrated system. But we do have the staff in place right now and additional resources that stand behind that company to kind of further support that. So I just want to make sure the council knows that those issues, you're absolutely right, you know, the issues with the City of Atlanta and some of the other smaller jurisdictions that got hit. We had, we sat down, had deep conversations in regards to making sure that we have provisions in place to make sure we were protected. And needless to say, we've been up for a year, we haven't had, you know, took a little bit of challenge getting started to begin with, but, you know, that we've really done a great job kind of getting everything moving forward. The system, the way it protected, the redundancy that we already have in place. They've done a fantastic job of making sure that we are protected. So I think we do have some of the expertise in-house already and certainly have those resources at hand to be able to make sure that we devise a scope that clearly defines exactly what we need going forward.
I got a question.
Councilwoman, yes.
I have two questions. First question is on the procurement side. So I get a little uncomfortable when we, in my mind, when we do this backwards, which is get a quote from a company and then go back and do an RFP or an RFQ. Because we've almost, we've been exposed to, and I know it's confidential, a lot of it is, but we've been exposed to one company's contract, one company's price line, one company's scope. And then, but we are the same people that will evaluate the RFQ or the RFP. But we almost have, we're using someone else's information to base our responses to the RFP and RFQ off of, when they may be the very people that also respond to the RFP or the RFQ. So it kind of just puts you in a weird situation, because normally in RFQ and RFP, all of that is not disclosed. It's, you know, it's closed information. But when you ask for a contract and a quote upfront and then go back and do an RFP, now that company's information, we already have. So on the procurement side, to me, it makes it sticky. Especially when we're the ones that do the scoring and the evaluation of the same people who we already have a quote from.
So let me expand on that, if you don't mind, please. Because the information that they provided for us, we gave to them. So it's not their information, it's our information.
Yeah, but it's their plan on how they want to execute what we've asked for.
Okay.
And then their costs associated with executing that plan, which is what we would receive from the other companies who respond to the RFQ. And then, because an RFQ ultimately goes back to an RFP. So, you know.
So let me further explain.
It's the same information, with just their cost, how they'll do it and how much they'll charge to do, to execute our plan. So when we have that information from one company and then we ask for other companies to respond, now we, no matter, rather we say we're not going to use it or not, internally, we are always going to use the first one that we received, because that's our benchmark, versus getting them all at one time. Now, every response you look at, you're looking at it with the same disclosure versus the one you've had previously. You're always going to subconsciously compare that one, because that's your baseline. Which is why when you do an RFQ and RFP, most of that information is confidential. So all I'm saying is, it's too late to change it now, we already have it. I'm just saying that, you know, if we're going to have contract for services that are going to require a competitive bid process, we probably shouldn't, we should not receive a form of that competitive bid ahead of time.
Then, Councilwoman, help me with this then. If that is the case, because this falls under professional services also.
Right.
I could come to you all very well, just like I've done today or prior to this and say, okay, council, you know, we've done our due diligence from a staff standpoint, from an operational standpoint, from a marketing standpoint. And for a professional services opportunity, this is the best-in-class people that we could find so far. And we've been at this for, you know, a little while now. And then, we would then have to vote yes or no, up or down, on that company based on their qualifications and the pricing that they just provided for us, exactly like Quikit. Instead, which you make a good point also. Instead, what I'm saying is that we do know our baseline. We did provide this information to them. They came back with regards to, you know, what their quote would be. But I'm saying, let's put this out for an RFQ, and we can provide additional things and expertise that we have in-house, excuse me, in-house here with InterDev and some other folks. And then now we get best-in-class of all of it. So that's not, it's not plagiarizing them, it's not stealing information, and I know you weren't suggesting that. But, and I can appreciate, you know, from that side, where you're coming from. But there's only really two ways to do this, unless you tell me different, is that if we're going to be fair across the board for all the things that we send out over, you know, per our purchasing policy, over $50,000, has to go out for an RFQ or an RFP?
Absolutely. No, I'm not suggesting that we don't put it out for an RFQ or an RFP. What I'm suggesting is that we start there, before we receive quotes and service agreements from other companies. And we can't go backwards now because we already have it. But in an ideal situation, you'd present with staff, look, here's a City of Innovation, and we have found some gaps in our softwares and our IT information systems. So in order to fill these gaps, here's a master plan that we think would help fill these gaps. What we'd like to do is take what we want and put it out for an RFQ. Versus, we have all this information, we vetted a company, here's its company's information, take a look at that, and then if we like it, we're going to go with that. So that's what we're, kind of what we're doing now, is we found the gap, we know how to fill the gap, we know what we want. But we took it a step further and said, and here's the company, here's a company who could do that. Instead of doing that last portion ahead of time, let's hold that. Say, here's the information, here's the gap, here's how we want to fill it. Let's do an RFQ to solicit those who can fill this gap.
All right.
So that way, I don't have a contract to compare against all the other RFQs ahead of time. Because I'm going to, you're going to use that first one as a benchmark, because that's the first one that you saw.
And that we provided the information to them, not that they...
Right, but they provided their cost and how they're going to execute that plan. They provided that upfront.
So now we're at a point, and tell me what is comfortable with council, tell me what's comfortable with council. Now we're at a point where we have this situation going on. We know who they are, we provided them information, they gave us back information. Now, based on all of our research, what we have inside here with regards to how we use software, how we operate, the type of information we want, you know, to go out to our citizens, we're at a point now, let me use it on a number scale. We're in that seven range, but I want to get to 10. And yes, they did provide, accurate in statement, they did provide some information, based on what we gave them. But it's not enough as to where we completely want to go with the City of Excellence, the City of Innovation and Excellence. So based on what you just said, where do we go to from here so I can get the right information back, based on all the things that we're getting ready to put out?
We still do the RFQ. I'm not disagreeing with the RFQ. I'm just asking that in the future, we don't solicit services ahead of the RFQ. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
We don't have a choice now but to go into RFQ, because it's over the threshold. So we have to do the competitive bid process. I just took a very long-winded way of saying, next time, let's do the RFQ first before you solicit information from the companies to provide that service.
Okay. Then having said that, Attorney Currie, am I putting us in any legal jibber-jabber?
No, and I would suggest, while these contracts have been distributed out publicly, I would take, if you're going to go to the RFQ process, then I would suggest I take everything that you all have, since you're going to be the evaluators and give it back to the city manager, and then you don't have it anymore.
You can't take it out of my head.
Then, Ms. Cobble, if you can take this 100 pages of all this, all of this technological stuff.
You're pretty serious.
If it's in your head, then you need to be doing something else.
All right, so to be clear, to make sure we have the right clarity, I understand, Councilwoman Adoma's point. I understand and agree with both with regards to where we're going technically and operationally and from a procurement standpoint, so everybody's covered and legal, because I don't want this company to feel as though we stole information from them, which we did not do. So having said that, let me craft a motion myself, since it's in my head. A move that we send out a request for qualifications for the City of Innovation. Do I have a second?
And that the city manager, as a designated purchasing agent, prepare a request for qualifications.
And that the city manager is the designated qualified person to handle the RFQ.
That's close.
In other words, what should be done is that it should be drafted and distributed to you all to look at and to review before going out.
Okay.
Which then should identify part of what the identification is going to be and part of what you're going to have from here. While you can say that holes are discovered and things of how to fill holes are done, you'll, by doing this, you may find that there are other holes that had not been discovered, and you may find that there are other means that are better ways of filling the holes than what you're aware of. That's what the process does.
I got a question.
Let me finish my motion first, then we can go in discussion. Motion's on the table, I need a second.
I second it.
All right, discussion, you are now up, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, if we're going to send it out, then I have an additional list of qualifications that I'd like to have included in that RFQ. So what is the process for that?
I would give them to the designated purchasing agent, which is Mr. Harris.
Before he put together...
Yeah, I mean, if you've got some suggestions, I mean, whatever suggestions you may have, what you want to look at, please give them to him before he drafts it, so he can take them into consideration. That's not to say he's going to use them or not use them, or use part of them, or use none of them. But still, that's, would be the right way to do it. If there are certain things that you would like to see in it, go ahead and give him that information now. I'm sure he would appreciate that.
So I guess I got one additional thing to say in regards to the motion that's on the floor that has been moved and seconded. At some point in time, I guess we need to read that motion back just to ensure that we all know what it is that we're exactly voting on at this point in time. If you don't have, I mean, if you don't mind. So I think it should be, I don't know if you guys need to craft this real quick between the city attorney and the city clerk and the mayor. But I think it need to be clarified exactly what it is that we're voting on. And also, whether or not the request that Councilwoman Adoma made should be entered into that motion or not at this particular time. But, you know, I think I understand exactly what is on the floor. And based on my understanding of it, I am in agreement with it. But I want to make certain what I am understanding is in fact what it is.
So, Madam Clerk, you want me to restate it, or you can say it?
If you could just, I have sent out a RFQ for the City of Innovation, and the city manager is the designated...
Purchasing, what'd you call him, the city attorney? Designated purchasing agent?
Designated agent.
He's designated, let me write out a motion.
Designated purchasing agent, that's what I have.
Let me write out a motion.
We shall wait, sir.
Give me the time, if you want to go to some...
You're able to vote.
Come back to this, or if you want to take a little break, you can take a little break.
Take two minutes and wait until you run down the city manager, how about that? Everybody can jump up and run at the same time.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to submit RFQ from qualified vendors for an incident management and business... Continuing services in accordance with the provision of the city's purchasing policy.
That's why I went to the bathroom.
It's actually the motion to submit the RFQ for what you have here, incident management and business continuity...
Services, okay.
...in accordance with the provisions of the city's purchasing policy.
Service got in there somewhere. Where was service? Read it one more time. No, I'm almost there.
Motion to submit RFQ from qualified vendors for incident management and business conformity services in accordance with the provision of the city's purchasing policy.
Got it.
Is that conformity or continuity?
No, it's continuity.
Continuity, okay.
All right, ready, council?
I second it.
I have to read it first. I have to read it first.
Oh, you want me to read it?
We got it.
Hand it. I have to read it?
I have to read it. I have to read it. I have to read it.
Okay.
Move to submit the RFQ from qualified vendors for the incident management and business continuity services in accordance with the purchasing policy. Moved? Do I have a second?
I second it again.
All right, so moved and promptly seconded. Is there any further discussion? I haven't seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All opposed? Thank you, counsel, move to number seven. Resolution adopting a policy that copies all expense reimbursement reports submitted by mayor and council members on the website.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, seven through 11 are all sort of related here. But, um, because we had discussions in work session regarding the level of expense reimbursement, how we determine that, and how much it should be, what should it take, and, um, the standard under state law is that the expense has to be reasonable and necessary and incurred in the conduct of a councilperson's business of the city. That's, that's the standard. The procedure is, I've now investigated, is that the city has a reporting process in which expense reports are prepared by each of you and submitted for the reimbursement of expenses. It's not an allowance that you just go willy-nilly doing it. We've adopted a purchasing policy, um, which is very specific with respect that can be done in making these determination as to what's reasonable and necessary. The incurrence in the business of the city, I look at as really a budgetary type item, because you would have to budget those types of items. There was some discussion that we had with Ms. Cobble concerning cap, or thinking about a cap, saying that there's no cap for this, or no cap for that. And then, and she and I have had no conversations since that time. I wanted to go ahead and get this presented in front of you all in a means by which, um, is based on my own personal experience, is that caps seem to be a problem. So to eliminate a cap, um, we do have the internal procedures associated with the review of expense reports through the city manager's office to determine what's appropriate and not appropriate, in accordance with policies of that. And then adding the complete transparency on top of that, by publishing all expense reports of mayor and council on the website, adds another, what I call, an area of, of...
Transparency.
The ability of the public to look at what you're doing, and whether or not, in their opinion, it is necessary for the business of the city. So, um, so I've presented something without any consideration of a cap, but with the premise that, based upon how I see the process working today, and how the, how the expenses are analyzed, and the fact that we actually, or the city actually has budgeted expenses, even though those expenses will be in excess of all the caps that are there, is not get into, well, an education expense shouldn't be counted, or this shouldn't be counted, let's just let the, you know, I suggest you let the budget drive it. You all participate in that, you all determine what's necessary. You have a city manager, and you've got procedures based upon what's reasonable and necessary. And somebody, you've got somebody to overlook it and check it and push back on it. And so, my recommendation is, is that you do it the way, as far as the budgetary process goes, but add the little element of complete transparency, since we, and I, and I agree with complete transparency, that you go ahead and disclose to the public what you're spending on your, you know, what you're reimbursed for, whatever it may be with that. So, the other item associated with compensation, which has already been referred to by Ms. Cofield, relates to, um, the increasing of the mayor's salary from $20,000 a year to $75,000 a year, which is consistent with what was presented and delivered to the local delegation by all of you in connection with the adoption of a new charter, which didn't make it through the local delegation, for whatever reasons, I do not know. But that did not take place. So, it's an ability to do it under home rule. I think you can, um, there's a $5,000 difference between the amount of compensation the mayor currently gets, and what council members currently get. As you all know, in connection with the birth of the city, there was a higher compensation level for the mayor in the original Senate Bill 208, and as it went through committee, it, uh, they asked, I guess it was the, um, who was the representative from Dunwoody, Tom? Can't think of his name, just basically looked at you.
Framiller.
Basically looked at you and said, do you want a city or not? And whacked it down to $20,000, not really taking into consideration the fact that the charter did provide for a strong mayor, and with, with certain responsibilities. Now, so that is also before you. The question regarding can it be divided up? Well, you can divide it up, but I would frankly think you, since it's all the same subject matter, is you leave it alone, go through your public hearings, let's hear what the constituents have to say. You are the legislators, you can change it, or you can, you can eliminate it, or not vote for it. So it's not a, it's not an all or none proposition that you have here, because you don't have the input of the public at all, as far as what the public would think, because you're gonna end up having two public hearings associated with it. You know, the other aspect of it is, is a political aspect. When you do anything with regard to home rule, you run the risk that the public is not gonna like it, in the case of, of the mayor. If they don't like the fact that he's getting such a big raise, because it won't come into effect until after the election, which would be in 2020. The public can certainly vote him away, and that would put you in another position, where then you could deal with it in that, that situation at all. I would not, I would not, I would, I would probably look at, somebody would probably run, is gonna run on this matter, if you don't mind me elaborating, it's just saying, well, if I'm elected mayor, I'm not gonna be paid anything, or take anything. And so, but here, this is open. I think there, this gives the public the opportunity to examine what the mayor does, and how much time he spends. And, but at the end of the day, it's, it's all, it's your decision, okay? I mean, you're the legislators, it's your decision to do that. So I would, I would suggest you just, you know, you keep that one together, and, and go ahead and have the public hearing, instead of having hearings on the expenses and hearings on the other, just do it. Because you're not, you know, as you're going through the ordinance procedure, just like we do when we read these ordinance procedures, because you're gonna have two reads of this, things can change, you can change them, you know, you can come, you know, you can come to a consensus on that. The other item I have in there, it relates to the changing of the name of the judges. It became the issue of calling a judge a judge pro tempore. Was an issue for that judge in getting judgeships in other municipalities. So, uh, the language in, as far as naming the judges, has been changed, that we now have just a judge, whoever they are, they're judge, there's not an assistant judge, there's not a, you know, judge pro temp, he's a judge. And then, there's a designation of a chief judge, which is really what you've got now, anyway, is you have a chief judge and another judge. Just as an accommodation to the judge pro temp to eliminate any issue that he's of a different quality of citizen than anybody else. The final item that's on here, relating to the dates of the submittal of the budget, I wish to withdraw at this time, because, um, Ms., what's your name? Ms. Laura. Has prepared, well, had prepared, a list of dates under the charter, which I'm going to submit to you all, which is gonna be a great cheat sheet. And in reviewing this with Ms. Cosgray, see, now I remember. It's hard getting old. That, um, there are other dates that are affected by this also. And also studying it more closely, I'm becoming of the opinion that we don't need to make any changes to this anyway, and let these dates stand, because these are really dates for you to determine when the budgetary process is to start, which I think you should start making those considerations right now. So, once I go back through it, I'm probably gonna tell you to not, not to do this, that what you have is fine, and you can work within it, with, with what's there. The other not included in this was the ad valorem tax, um, adjustment, which I would be glad to bring back into, I know that, that here's, Ms. Cobble, you have an interest in that. And I can bring that back. Whether or not that's, you want to cover that at this time or not, I don't anticipate that you're going to have any assessment of ad valorem taxes this time around, so that's not, that's not, that's not pushing like everything else right now. Or this particular one item is pushing, because, one, the expense issue is an issue, and one, the mayor's compensation, if we're gonna do it, if you're gonna suggest a change, then let's, let's just, let's just get on, throw it up, see, see what the public says, and make your final decision after you hear what everybody has to say.
Attorney Currie, can I, talk, can we talk a little bit about the expense count? And you and I have not had a chance to circle back, but I have been doing some work since the last meeting. So I wanna, I want, and I guess, this is for everybody too, but I wanted to kind of talk about what we have now, and understanding what we have now will help determine whether we need to change it or not. So, the internal auditor and I have been kind of working back and forth to make sure that whatever changes that we make to it, you know, we're compliant, and it's a smooth accounting process. So, anyway, we've had a discussion kind of about what the charter says now. So, right now, the charter says that the, um, expense, the $5,000 and $3,000, is an annual expense allowance. So, the distinction...
But go ahead and read the whole.
Expense allowance.
You read the whole thing.
And, of $5,000, and each council member should be provided an annual expense allowance of $3,000 for the reimbursement of reasonable expenses actually and necessarily incurred by the mayor and council members in carrying out their duties as elected officials. So, the...
That last part is important.
Absolutely, yeah, it's always got to be.
Because that, that means it's just, you know, you gotta account for it.
Right, so that's where, a little bit of my, I need a clarification, and this is kind of why I brought the internal auditor in to help me with this clarification. Because I knew of a definition of an allowance, the definition of a reimbursement, and then what is to be considered reasonably, carrying out your duties reasonably and provable, right? So, in the opinions that we received from both your firm and our assistant attorney firm, the allowance, the definition of allowance by, is it state or municipal law? One of the two, is that the allowance is considered additional compensation.
That's right.
A reimbursement is just that. To, a reimbursement, you spend the money, and then as long, as long as that expense was provable to be necessary for your duties, then you are reimbursed for that expense.
That's right.
So, in here, we kind of use both words. We use expense allowance for the reimbursement. So that's where I kind of was like, I was a little confused. So anyway, after having a few conversations, I think, um, I understand that the reimbursement, the word reimbursement in this situation, is just to clarify that there is an assumption that mayor and council members will spend money on carrying out their duties outside of the annual salary. You will have expenses required, that you will spend to carry out your duties. So, it's not necessarily the definition of reimbursement, where you spend the money and you receive payment back, it's just a future assumption that you will spend money. So what we've allowed is a $3,000 and a $5,000 allowance to compensate for the assumed expenses you will incur. If that is the case, then this is an annual expense allowance, not required to have supporting documentation for a reimbursement, then that allowance is carried out throughout the year, across the board. If it is a reimbursement, then it does require documentation. So my first question is, what interpretation do we want to go with? Is it an allowance that's not required to have documentation for reimbursement? Or is it a reimbursement that is required to have documentation?
All right, if you, if you read, if you, I guess, read the opinion that Steve Fincher, that memorandum that was prepared last year. The difference between an allowance is, you can say, okay, I'm gonna give you, you can have $5,000 a year allowance, and you can do whatever you want to with it, as long as it's, you know, you're using it for the business, but you really don't have a way.
Right.
An allowance is considered to be compensation.
Right.
That in order to change an allowance, then the compensation also has to be changed, and then you also are under that rule that it would not take effect until after the next election.
Right.
If, as far as expense. Now, I think we're, and Winston's here, but I think where, where we, where we are and where we agree is that if it is reimbursable, it's a reimbursable expense, and you document it, then, and you think of, you think of a tax situation here. If it's a reimbursable expense incurred in, okay, the performance of your duties, reasonable and necessary, then you get reimbursed for that expense, because you have spent money that city would have otherwise been required to spend doing whatever it was you were doing. So that reimbursement is not considered to be taxable income to the recipient. Where if it's an, so therefore, it is not compensation. So if the recipient does that, and accounts for everything the way that they're supposed to, then it's a reimbursement, but you're still subject to that cap. And this is where I think we, we agree. In other words, you don't get your allowance plus whatever you think, you know, you can get reimbursable, you get $5,000. And as I read it, while it's called an allowance, it's, you can say that it's an, you are allowed $5,000 a year, or $3,000 a year, for expenses incurred, ordinary and necessary expenses incurred in the conduct of your business, which means that you've got to demonstrate that it is reimbursable, in other words, you've got to submit it. Otherwise, if you don't submit it, and you get paid the money, then you need to pay, you need to pay tax on that, and the city's got the obligation to report that, include that, I don't know if you all received W-2s or received T-99s, I don't know. What do they get?
W-2s.
W-2s, okay. So it would have to be included in that, where if it's truly a reimbursable expense, which it is, then it does not have to be included. So, and while you're here, am I saying anything that you disagree with, Winston?
I certainly agree about the distinction between the allowance and the reimbursement. I think it's called, I think it's a distinction probably. I think that the tax implications of an allowance, that's not altogether clear. Because an allowance, although technically considered income, I'm not certain that you would be taxed for money that you spend solely for the benefit of the city, not the reimbursement. And I would say, I don't know what we would be up against. So I stay with it.
But you agree, whatever it is, whether, whether you give them a receipt or not, it's $5,000 and $3,000.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so that's...
Well, yeah, and I think we understand the hard numbers, but the question that continues to come up is, is it an allowance that's to be divided out throughout the year as one lump sum with no supporting documentation required? Or is it reimbursable to a maximum of $3,000 and $5,000, still requiring supporting documentation for that reimbursement?
The latter is yes.
The latter is it?
That latter is yes.
Okay.
Because you're, you know, when you, you and I, in, you know, accountants and tax people, they think of an allowance, you think of one thing. If you look at what's saying under state law, saying you have an allowance of $5,000, that's a different connotation, meaning you have... that's a different connotation, meaning you have, you know, I mean, it could have been written saying that you get reimbursed, da-da-da-da-da, but you will not get reimbursed for more than $5,000 or $3,000. That would have made it much clearer.
Yes, it would have.
So, as I interpret it, it's, that's the way that I would interpret it. We have the policies which says that you have to submit your expenses and do all that. In this case, you are just limited by a cap. And the cap is not workable.
So, now that we have that understanding, that it is not a monthly allowance to be divided, it is a reimbursable expense at capped at 3 and 5, then we have, we can now, amongst the council, decide, do we want to continue with a reimbursement type of allowance? Or do we want to move to a standard allowance that is just, it's not reimbursable, it's one lump sum across the board each month, and do away with the reimbursement quote-unquote process? So, what we, initially, our conversation in the last work session was, I'd like to see a cap at the reimbursement level versus just saying whatever's budgeted. So, if that's the case, and it's still a reimbursement, if we do away with the $5,000 and $3,000 cap, then every expense that we have would be wrapped into training, travel, and what's necessary to carry out your duties. There would no longer be a need for three different accounts, three different line items. It would just be reimbursable, whatever your expense is, but you have to prove that that was an expense for carrying out your duties. Versus setting an allowance that covers all of your duties without the reimbursement documentation, but then set in the budget, this is a certain amount allotted for training and travel.
Well, that's, you know, my mind wandered a little bit. But let me go back and say, okay, take the allowance aspect of it. If you're given an allowance and just divided it by 12 and taking it each month, I don't recommend you do that because you will pay tax on that allowance.
Right.
And under the, as I recollect, is that you won't be able to deduct your expenses except after 2% of your adjusted gross income. So...
A tax nightmare in a nutshell.
That's not a good deal. Okay? That's not a good deal for you. So, if you get down to that, you say, okay, you can, you know, whatever you incur that is reasonable, you know, necessary for your business, then you will get reimbursed for that. And that's where, sort of where the budgetary process came in, and maybe I'm thinking the same thing. Some of it's going to be training, some of it's going to be travel, some of it's, you know, going to be promotion, whatever. But then, you know, you all play the rules. You all establish your rules. Now, you know, if you want to go back and say, they have to be reimbursable and increase the caps, that's another way of doing it. Say, instead of, instead of, instead of being 3,000, it could be 8,000. And the mayor can be 20,000. I mean, it...
Right, yeah. You could set any number.
I've still got to come with that receipt.
Okay. And I guess, so that was the differential that I needed to understand, rather, you know, the dollar amount is not necessarily what I was debating about. It was more so, is it a reimbursement that requires documentation? Or are we talking about an allowance that's additional compensation, doesn't require documentation? Basically, which option do we choose? And then whichever one we choose, the accounting process goes forward with consistency across all six accounts. But whatever we choose, it's either allowance, which you're suggesting is, don't go that route, it's a tax nightmare, which I would agree, or reimbursable, decide if you want to set a number to that reimbursable cap. So, that was the conversation, or that was the guidance I was seeking and understanding because, to me, you know, it had both, it used both terms in the same sentence. It was difficult for me to comprehend.
That's why there are 159 courthouses in this state.
Learning that every day more and more. Okay.
So, where, so, tell me where you all would like to proceed with this.
I would like to move at least, I would like to move that to a work session to talk about that a little bit more, kind of hash that out, now that we know the distinction between the two types of account, and then kind of talk about it a little bit more in work session, kind of which route we'd like to go.
I'm fine with that, if we can make the resolutions today to move forward for the advertising.
Y'all go through, because I got to put the actions in here as to what you all have done, and it's like all over the place, so I don't know what you...
No, when we get to that point, I think there are two things, there's two things here. You wish to be transparent with respect to your expense reports, which I assume you all would want to be, because they're still subject to open records anyway.
Right, yes. I have no problem with that, but the different expense accounts, the expense reports will be different if there is an allowance versus a reimbursement.
The other, the other is commencement is giving the instructions to the clerk in order to proceed with the publication, the notice, which will also drive then the dates in which you would have your...
Right. Well, it isn't, to me, it doesn't make sense to advertise the amendment until we clear up what that amendment is going to read.
What is, I guess, Mary, if it's what...
Well, this is where I want to go. We're going to solve this right now. Because just sitting here listening to you, Councilwoman, I got a full education of where I want to go. That is just, I'm just one guy. I don't need another work session for it. I'm just, you're, I rely on what your knowledge is along with, of course, the city attorney and the city manager, and this is my piece of it here. And this solves it for me. Reimbursement, showing your receipts. And to a point where either uncapped or a reasonable number that matches, quite frankly, our budget, because we know how much we're spending, we know how much we're supposed to spend, we know how much we're allowed it for. So, as for an allowance with a tax opportunity, no, thank you. No, no. I'll take the, I'll prove my expenses because I dedicate a vehicle, I dedicate gas, I dedicate wherever we're going, I have my receipts, I have attorney and receipts. This is as clear as a bell to me. And posting it on the website for citizens, I think that's brilliant. Let them see what's happening. Let's see, you know, this is transparency, this is the way, this is the way it works. So, with that, the reason, Councilwoman, I have some specific reasons that I don't want to delay this. Because I think that we can make a combined decision right now with six people that's sitting up here. Because you and Mr. Curry have been crystal clear on what those differences are, and I'm just speaking for myself. So, I'll open it to the floor for counsel.
So, we need to decide within that, though, do we set a number as a reimbursable cap? Or do we leave it unlimited? Right? So, it lets, so if we, if we all, or at least four of us agree to do the, to continue with the reimbursement process...
Okay.
Then we still have to decide, are we capping the reimbursement? Or are we setting a number to that reimbursement?
Well, right now, what's in the language is the budget cap.
Exactly.
Well, that's in the language that you presented, yes. But we have not, as a group, decided.
But that's been that...
And that's what he, that's not what he's...
Yeah, I mean, you proved it one time when it was in the new charter language. It was approved.
Yep.
So, now, but now, but now that's your, but now you are the legislators.
All right. We're in control of our own destiny right now.
There, you opened by saying all of these are connected. Are you asking us to approve all of this as one? Are these to be taken individually?
No, what I would ask, what I was saying, they were all connected so I could discuss them all together. Then I, what I would suggest is you go down the line, you have number six, which is the resolution...
No, let's start with, I think we're at seven.
Number seven, which is the resolution creating the policy that your expense reports will be put on the website, which, the expense reports and all the documentation.
And we're to handle these individually.
That's right. As far, so that would be the first, that would be the first resolution that's presented to you right now. A resolution of the city of Stonecrest adopting the policy that copies of all expense reimbursement reports submitted by the mayor and council members on the city's website. That may not be grammatically correct, but it should be posted on the city's website.
Submitted by the mayor and the other end.
So, for clarification...
Posted on the website.
Okay.
No, I mean, I'm just, well, when you finish, motion.
So, for clarification, I mean, I'm totally in favor of the transparency, have no problems with that. And I guess I want to go back to the charter. The charter does provide guidelines, but we have inconsistencies with what's in the charter and maybe what's being practiced. So, and I don't know if we've had enough discussion on that, Attorney Curry. I think there needs to be some more discussion on, in addition to the cap, but talk about the existing charter, and talk more about what is it that we are actually...
Let me do.
Practicing. And then, I'm not in favor, and I'm not comfortable with anything that requires zero documentation. If we're spending a taxpayer dollars, I think there needs to be some accountability for documentation.
I think, I think we've determined that, yes, that's what's happening today.
Yeah, well, I think I heard Councilwoman Cobble say no documentation.
Without interrupting you, can we, can we just, can we, can we deal with this resolution on the website, posting the website if no, if anybody wants to make that motion, and then we can go talk about the other.
All right. I'll make the motion then, because I'm in favor of that.
Make a motion that the council members...
Number seven.
Reimbursement reports be posted on the city's website.
Okay. I make a motion that copies...
We can get that.
Go with that one. Is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
Ready.
Ready.
I make a motion that copies of all expense reimbursements by the mayor and the council members are published on the city's official website.
Second.
All right. Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes. Number eight, we'll go down, Ms. City Attorney. This is the ordinance to, is this, we talking first read, Ms. City Attorney?
No, sir. No, sir. These are just the ordinances. In other words, what I did is I listed three ordinances which would, which relate to amendments of the charter under home rule.
Say that again, sir.
Which, three, three ordinances, one of which I'm pulling, which is the one relating to, the last one, well, the one relating to the change of the dates for the budget.
Oh, okay.
So, we're saying two.
Yep, got that.
One relating to compensation, which includes the expense reimbursement, the other relating to the names of the judge, whether or not the, whether or not this council wishes to proceed with the notice and publication requirements in order to commence the process of having the hearings or home rule for these proposed ordinances that are here. This is not a first read of any ordinance that will occur at a later date. So, really, all you're being asked to do, or asked, or asked, is the resolution is to authorize the clerk to start the process, which he has to do by publication.
And which one of those is that?
That would be number, which one's the...
Oh, 11.
Number 11 is that resolution. It would be just those two.
Which two are we talking about?
All right. This is, this is the resolution. The resolution of the city council authorizing the city clerk to publish two notices of proposed amendments of the city charter pursuant to OCGA 3635-3B1, which is home rule. Whereas, the mayor and city council proposes to provide notices, conduct public hearings, and read two times the ordinance attached here to relating to the amendment by home rule of section 2.07 of Article II, which is the compensation and the expense issue, and Article IV, which is the judges of the charter of the city of Stonecrest. So, what, what the resolution says, that you start the process. This does not, you know, this does not mean that what you're publishing or what she's saying is going to sit there and, you know, put it in, you know, sit there and lock everything down and say, this is it, whether you vote up or down. But it does start the public hearing process and discusses, and also enables you all to continue to discuss the matter.
And this, the clock can start on the 60 days with this.
Whatever the dates are, I don't, I don't know where the publication dates are and following with our meeting dates, but yes, you've got, it's, it's going to be a lengthy process.
Okay.
You said two notices. Jenna says three notices. Which is it?
It's two. I'm checking, because what I'm doing is I'm deleting the one related to the budget date.
So, I'm confused.
Before you start.
Okay, well, I am confused.
Before you start. This is where we are. Make sure that I'm clear for everybody. If we go with a resolution, what you just read, Tom, okay? We can start the advertising process with regards to this, so the citizen, they can get notice as to where we're going, everybody can come up and make their public comment, they can stand on the ceiling if they like, but they'll know because we're going to properly advertise it and give it the right time. Then to Councilwoman Cobble, and to anyone else who wants to get a finite difference between differences that we're talking about, Councilwoman, we still can do that. Am I correcting this, Ms. City Manager, I mean, and, 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 City Attorney?
We can, but if, if through those discussions, something has a substantive change, then now what you've advertised has to be re-advertised.
Well, what they're advertising isn't specific enough.
No, it will be. I mean, this is just the resolution. What she advertises is going to be exactly what the home rule amendment is, and will be very specific. This resolution is not. But what she advertises will be exactly what we are recommending for the home rule amendment to be. So, what I'm saying is, until we get that language crystal clear, why would we advertise and then come back and have, and have to re-advertise an amendment to the amendment?
But I guess where I'm missing that, Councilwoman.
Let's, let's, let's discuss this. I mean, if there's, if, if you want to...
And we can, and we can still get it done in a timely manner. If we, if we, if we move it to work session, we come up with something within a day or two, we just call a special call meeting and, and make the amendments, pass the amendments and advertise.
Work session is next.
We have to wait until the next...
Work session is, is right after this.
Yeah, I know. I got to leave at noon.
Well, see, this is what I'm saying. I'm sorry. You know, I...
I mean, it requires four votes, though, so whether I'm here or not, I mean, you still can get it done. I guess my point is only that if you advertise one thing, and then through discussion that changes, you now have to advertise again the change.
All right, then, so let's, let's settle it now. There's the two differences, is reimbursement or allowance.
That's one.
Yeah.
And the second one is, if it's reimbursement, do we keep the caps the way they are in the charter, and do we eliminate the caps?
Well, that's when we went back to say that we can determine it by the budget. We have a budget. We all, we all vote on the budget. We know exactly what we're supposed to be spending in that budget. So, we can use that, you know, as our model. And on top of that, if you go over your budget, well, if that's possible or not, still, it's transparent because the whole world's going to know what you're spending and what you're doing.
Yeah, no, I hear you. My, let me clear this up. Allowance or reimbursable? I'm reimbursable. Cap or no cap? I'm a vote for the cap. So, whatever four votes carries, cap or no cap, reimburse or allowance, that's what we'll carry, whether we do it today, or we talk about it in work session, and then we come up with it then, that's just, I'm one vote. My, my vote is going to be that we keep a cap on the reimbursement.
No matter how much we talk about it, that's where you're going to stand.
I'm going to stand with the cap. Now, we can discuss what that cap is...
There we go.
But I'm going to stand on a reimbursable cap. Now, we want to talk a little bit more about that dollar amount, that cap, we can do that. If, if the majority says, nope, let's leave it unlimited, then I'm just one vote, that fails and it's unlimited. I'm just saying, from this seat right here, I'm a vote for a reimbursable cap. I'm open to discuss the cap, but I'm a reimbursable cap.
All right. So, now, since I know where you stand, this is clear, Ms. City Manager.
Can I, all right, let me just read to you what, what this says, okay? The mayor... The mayor and each council member shall be reimbursed for the reasonable expenses actually and necessarily incurred by the mayor and council members in carrying out their duties as elected officials of the city, but for each year, but for each year only to the extent of the amount provided in the annual budget originally adopted by the city council, which says that you can't come back and keep pushing your stuff up.
Right.
Now, so, so, see, your cap is the budget, as you originally done it. Now, if you, you know, if, and, and so, I think what, this, this answers the question, there's no word allowance used anywhere in here.
Good.
Um, so that answers that question, so it really gets down to what's the cap. This contemplates the original budget, which means you can't come back and, you know, amend the budget to do it, um, or do you want to just specify an amount?
You're looking at, if I may, you're looking at the budget amount, and then there's a charter amount, and I think they're in, uh, some confusion, and so the charter addresses a certain amount for the mayor and council.
That's right.
Then you speak of putting in an allowance in the budget. The budget, uh, directly relate to what's in the charter, is that above and beyond?
Well, what we're saying is this is the amendment to the charter.
Yeah.
To take away the, the five and the three and let, and to provide that the cap is going to be what you adopted in your budget prior to the commencement of the year.
And I think there's enough ambiguity about this matter. I mean, I think there were that many ways to, uh, define allowance and reimbursement, but I'm not ready to proceed with this.
Neither am I.
Yeah.
And because when we adopted the budget.
Yep.
When we adopted the budget, I don't know if we had a understanding of how that was to be interpreted. There was no legal opinion in place when we adopted the budget, because if it was, we might have, would have adopted a different number in that budget. And my other question is, I, I'm very uncomfortable with moving this forward today because I still have oodles of questions that I'd like to have answered.
Okay, we're going to go to work session after this, and I don't care if we got to stay at nine o'clock at night. If you got somewhere to go, you got somewhere to go. But we're doing this in work session. I want to move to work session so we can get it complete. Is that, is that where we're going? Because we're not comfortable, we're not comfortable in voting on it right now. Are we in the same spot?
What?
Am I saying, am I saying it properly?
I just, I just want to make sure that everybody has an understanding. It's important that when we get up here and make decisions concerning the betterment of this city, that we understand as a group.
I agree.
What we're doing and not having dichotomy or decisions that are going in different kind of directions. So if it takes whatever it takes for us to get to that point, then let's do it. But I'm not going to vote on something when there's too many different apps, too many different arms and directions moving in too many different directions. Let's get some understanding and just let's move forward with it, that's all.
So my, my only question is, can, can we handle it?
I want to know what's the rush.
Can we handle it in work session? That's all I'm asking. We say we need to be handling it in work session.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we should definitely, Mr. Mayor, I, I do, I think we should just bring order to the meetings. I mean, right now, everybody's yelling out from all corners, and I think that's part, probably contribute to a lot of the confusion. I think there's a lot of people talking and not enough people listening. And I think that this is a pretty straightforward matter. I think we, we have approached it in the right, in the correct way to this point, and that is, we have broken out this particular issue, and I think that where a lot of confusion is, is that we're not trying, what we are trying to do is to amend the charter. So whatever is in the charter at this particular time, it's, it's okay to consider, but it shouldn't be a confusing issue, since what we are trying to do is to sort of take the confusion out of the picture and move to something that we are all clear on. And I think if we can stick with one item at a time, that would really help us a lot. Now, what Councilwoman Cobble is saying, what I, I think is very, very simple, she's not comfortable with not having a cap. What I think we all need to hear from her in particular is what the cap is, what number, do you have a number in mind for the cap? And then we can move this conversation on, because I think right now, that is our biggest opposition to this particular matter, not the, the mayor's salary, not all this other stuff, but simply this one particular issue. So whether or not we can move ahead with saying, go ahead and publish, uh, the, uh, the notice that we're going to amend, uh, for the ordinance to amend the charter. So, I mean, if we could move past that, and then we could get to the next point, I think if we go into council, uh, into, um...
Work session.
Right, work session to discuss this is not going to make it better, quicker, or shorter. I think we're at a point right now where we can settle this, when, if we just listen to each other's concern on this one particular issue. And I know there is a ton of questions about all the, the rest of the stuff, but on this one particular issue, I think where we're at now is with the cap. And I think we're all agreeing on the reimbursement portion, is that not true? I think we all agree with that, but where I think we don't all agree at is with the cap and how much the cap will be.
You could have one disagreement.
It could just be, it could just be one person.
I don't think the cap can be determined today. I don't think we're, I don't think we're in a position to determine the cap today. What we do know, the charter provides guidelines, we've been practicing inconsistencies with the charter process, and with that being the case, I think this, this warrants, I think we owe it to the citizens to do more discussion about what it is, what is the cap? I don't, I'm not ready to, to decide on a cap because I don't really understand what it is that we've been doing that's inconsistent. So I'm not ready to decide on a cap today.
Okay, Councilwoman, um, I'll yield. I'll yield. We don't operate inconsistently outside of the charter. If you don't understand it, that's a different subject, but we're not operating inconsistently outside of the charter. We're not doing that. So, um, I'll take with, um, why as Mr. Clayton says, and, um, the pleasure of the council is to have further discussion on it. My question goes back to the original piece. What can we get done today that satisfies most of what we're, we're, we're hearing today, so that we can continue to move forward? And yes, it is time sensitive, so, um, I'll take guidance from the council.
Okay, but, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Since I'm the one that has to leave, and, but I did tell you where I stood, but since I'm the one that has to leave, if you don't mind.
Nope.
Let me try to answer Councilman Clayton's questions, and then if it goes into further discussion without work session, at least I, I got everything out before I leave. And, so in work session, we talked, we kind of caved, I thought a very detailed explanation on why I'm uncomfortable with the cap. In, in a nutshell, that's basically because every year, if we leave it up to the budget to set the cap, then every year, that number fluctuates. It could be higher one year, it could be lower the next year, it's just a roller coaster ride. I just me, am uncomfortable with the opportunity of vulnerability with the roller coaster ride. So I would prefer a cap, so that, that's why. So you asked then what, what numbers would be in the cap? So, though, that answer depends on what we're, well, first of all, depending on the difference between reimbursement and allowance, that was the first thing. Now that we know what that interpretation is, is this all encompassing of training, travel, and expenses just to carry out your duties? Is all of that considered? Or are we talking about three different line items, or two different line items, three different accounts, or two different accounts? So kind of all depends on what that number is. For instance, if this reimbursement that the cap is set by the budget is all inclusive of training, travel, and just necessary expenses to carry out your duties, then that number would be much higher because it's all inclusive. If it's broken out where we're only talking about a reimbursement for just the expenses in carrying out your duties, if there's just that one, that would be a lower number. If it's separated where that, there's one number for just carrying out your duties, and then there's a separate number for training and travel, those two numbers would be different from one another, because you would spend much more in training and travel than you should be spending in carrying out your necessary duties. So, it, it's a loaded question-ish, but those are kind of the distinctions I need to know where we're going so that there's a number to put to it. Now, if I'm the only one, ain't no need to take up our time with that, we vote, and if it goes a different direction, then we saved a lot of time. If there, if there are others that have kind of that same, those same questions and we want to talk through that, then I think it is worthy of talking through. But if it's just me, no need, carry on. But, but those are the distinctions I have, so that's the reason why I prefer it, I prefer the budget not to be the cap, that the charter sets a cap so that whether it's our administration or administrations in 20 years from now, it's consistent. That's just my opinion. If, so, first question, is this an all-inclusive budget cap, or is this just for the expenses to carry out our duties? Please, internal auditor, feel free to join in this conversation.
And I, I think...
You can go ahead, I just want him to not have to scream from the back of the room.
Thank you. This is why, in other jurisdictions, allowances are paid out. Um, the city of Brookhaven has exact same language in their charter, they pay out allowances upfront. The DeKalb County School District, elected members...
I'm sorry, one, one, one second, um, could you just introduce for the sake of the, the crowd, who you are and what you do? Okay, you're just not a member of the, you know, you just came out to audiences.
I'm sorry. I'm Joe Thibodeau, I'm the principal partner of a firm policy consultant who acts as the internal auditor for the city of Stonecrest. I have been in discussions with, um, Councilwoman Cobble, as well as other members of the administration and the mayor on this subject for the past week and a half. Um, I'm the one who advised that this, that the allowance that is stated in the charter is compensation, should be taxed, and should be paid out upfront. That is the practice of most of our local governments. The DeKalb County School District cares well, with their elected officials, there is a salary amount, and there is an expense allowance which is paid upfront through payroll and taxed. That is because that amount is discretionary for that elected member to use for the carry out, to carry out their business as they see fit, but on a discretionary manner. Likewise, there is budget that is passed publicly that also applies to expenses that are reimbursable, and those expenses are capped by the budget. If you continue down the route that we're discussing now, where we cap it in the charter by charter amendment, every time the budget changes, you're going to have to amend the charter. As opposed to having the expense allowance set, have it paid out, and then your reimbursable expenses are budgeted and capped in the budget, and then that cap is adjusted by adjusting the budget, as opposed to the charter.
So now you're talking about, you're talking about two different accounts, though. You're talking about an expense and an allowance.
But, but, but to speak to what Councilwoman Adoma came up with, said, stated, or something that she stated, is that, okay, you already have an amount that is going to be upfront. So now the budgeted amount, you can adjust considering that $3,000 or $5,000 upfront. You can adjust that budgeted amount, saying, okay, councilperson X, you already get $3,000 that you don't have to document, but now we're going to give you an additional $2,000 for required conferences like GMA and required expenses or required training. And so that amount is capped in the budget. So now you can play those two against the other, one is set in the charter, and the other component is adjustable by the budget, as opposed to amending the charter every time the budget changes to reset the cap.
And, but you would only have to amend the charter to adjust the cap if you had, if that was an all-inclusive expense. If you separate the expenses out to be what's necessary for carrying out your duties, and then what's training and travel, you wouldn't have to adjust the charter, you would be, you would only be continuing to adjust the training and travel.
Correct.
Fortunately.
Correct.
So, totally understand that.
Correct.
And to my point, it's a completely different conversation than what the resolution is written now, right?
Okay.
So, we require a little more discussion, but, but that is a different opinion than what's coming from our charter.
So at any rate, as, as far as documentation is concerned, it would be up to council to decide if the charter, the, the, the allowance, the expense allowance required in the charter, which does have language saying that it's reimbursable, if that requires documentation. But I do strongly recommend that those amounts remain separate, that amounts for travel and education and training are in the budget, and the cap on your reimbursable expenses, if it's the allowance that's in the charter, that remains the same. Otherwise, you're adjusting the charter, you're amending the charter every year.
So, um, y'all like that idea?
But it comes as another opinion, and that's why I say I'm not ready to...
Well, if you, you know, if you want to follow the, it sounds like the, you know, the North DeKalb cities paying allowance out, and y'all just have at it, and then whatever's in the budget, you get that too. That's, which is, you know...
But somebody's taxable somewhere if it's an allowance. It's taxable.
Yeah, well, but you, but you've got, you've got the money, they pay it out, I, you know, it's, you know...
And it's taxable specifically because it does not require documentation. So because it doesn't require documentation, you pay taxes on it as compensation.
Mm-hmm.
I'm willing to put the, I'm, I'm willing to put the reimbursement in. I'm willing to show the receipts. I'm willing to show every mile, every dime.
These, these are all just options, mayor, but I'm, I've have a learned opinion as well through my experience, and the councilwoman called me up, and so it's my job to offer it.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Thibodeau.
Yes, ma'am.
I was under the impression, and this is what I, I have been doing, producing a receipt for every single item, whether it was for $2 or $200, I didn't know about any other type of system. So I was under the impression that everything that we do for council and mayor, that no one is exempt, that a valid original receipt was required, and when I took that to the clerk and the city manager, it was confirmed. And Ms. Mays, who I've worked very closely with, every time I go somewhere or do something, I go in there with these original receipts, and when I don't have it, Ms. James have pulled me aside and chastised me, and you bet I didn't either get reimbursed for it, or I didn't, you know, present it, one or the other. Certain things such as alcoholic beverages, not reimbursable. So what I, when I said that I thought there were some inconsistencies, let me clarify. I, what I meant by that was that I've always been under the impression that everything we do, everything, it's the taxpayer dollars, it's not my money. So when I go spend it, I was under the impression that I have to show my constituent and the taxpayers, this is where your money went. I was not aware that there was another system that requires zero documentation, including the training. Even when I go to the mayor's conference or GMA, I bring back receipts. So this is new to me, and that is why I'm confused. I'm not confused because, you know, I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm confused because that was the only system that I was aware of. So I want to thank you for clarifying that, because I didn't know about another system that did not require documentation. And let me just add, for the audience and for the mayor and the council, if we have any system that requires zero documentation, I'm uncomfortable with that too.
Can I make a motion?
Look, so I'm not standing anyway, whatever happens, though, Mr. Thibodeau, is that whatever our expenses or our receipts are, it will be transparent on our website, am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Nothing, nothing precludes you from filing your expenses online.
Right.
But the, I guess I'm not very comfortable right now alluding to inconsistencies in our accounting, because it wasn't clear as to which accounting process we should have been using, because the charter kind of speaks to both, and then there's two different interpretations. So I would be hesitant to call it accounting inconsistencies, I would say that it was some accounting confusion about which process to use, whether it was an allowance or reimbursement.
Councilwoman, you, you, I mean, the city was operating under the legal opinion provided by the city attorneys at the time.
Right.
Which is that all these expenses needed to be, were reimbursable and had to be proven.
Right.
You brought me in as an internal auditor who takes opinions, who studies opinions being put into practice.
Right.
And how those things work out within the system. So in that capacity, I'm saying that in practice, this is what other municipalities do, that this amount, which is provided for in the charter as an allowance, is distributed and taxed, and that any... and taxed, and that any additional expenses that the city would require, the council to make, such as conferences, other types of business travel, would be put into the budget, and then the budget adjusted for that amount.
Right. So, I think-
And so, it's just something that was, you know, you did not take into consideration what other municipalities and other organizations did. You went by what your legal opinion was.
Right. And we're using that to, I guess I'm trying to, in a way, clear up some of Councilwoman Adoma's confusion a little bit. So, we're kind of, now we're kind of dealing with two different things, so we probably should just stay on one, is what to do for the future. And then now that we have a clear understanding of the opinions about what we currently have, we can, we can work backwards with that. But for the future, what do we want to do? Do we want to do some, do, what do we want to do? Go ahead, go ahead.
If I can just-
Mr. Mayor.
Add, I'm sorry, if I could add real quick, I did, I didn't want to kind of reiterate what Mr. Thibodeau said, that for the sake of the council and for the public, that our process has been to require receipts for all of our expenditures. That's how we've, that or mileage receipts, you know, based on state requirements. And in regards to your latest, your last question in regards to going forward, I would also caution the council on, I know that there's been some talk about tying everything back to the charter. My concern in that case would be in, in, in the situation where, should there be an expenditure that's needed throughout, for a particular year, for whatever exigent reason it may come up, then you would be bound by what the charter says, and you'd have to go through the process of trying to have to change the charter throughout the year. So, I think having some flexibility, should the council need that, certainly be-
Well, it's still depending on whether it's a reimbursement or an allowance.
You always have the option of eliminating the-
If it's tied to the charter, you're bound by that final amount.
...no charter.
Right. So, excuse me, I got like two or three going at the same time.
Sorry.
I think they were all the same.
Wait a minute, city attorney.
If you follow what, what the, what's being practiced in North DeKalb County, then y'all have been shorted.
Right.
Okay.
It's going back, though.
So, which, which is not really, I think, what the intent of what's, what's been going on here. The other suggestion would be this, under the section 2.07 of the article two, where it talks about the mayor and each council member shall be reimbursed, why don't we just eliminate that language out of the charter completely, and then all you're gonna be dealing with is salaries? Then you're done with it. And then you, then you deal with your budget, and you can create your own caps, you can do what you want to.
This is gonna-
Unless, is, do you need a limitation in the charter?
Mayor, this is gonna take a lot of more discussion, that's why I would move to defer this into the next meeting, which-
You don't even know what you're deferring yet, George. You said defer what? You got eight, you got, you got eight items on here.
Deferring a decision on this matter.
Well, I, that's clear. That's gonna happen. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna not handle this right now. So, so before we go into any formal motion about what we're deferring, or deferring, let's decide at least what we have here on the table. If we're not gonna do it today, that's fine, okay. I'm okay, I'm not fussing, I'm okay. But I don't want any, thank you, person out of the audience.
Thank you, Rick, I'm glad.
And I apologize, councilman, I don't want to sound crass, that's not where I'm going. But I don't want to cross the border with deferral, no, 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 this, decide on what we're not going to do today, and I agree with council as a whole, it requires more discussion so we can make a solid decision. All right, all I'm just saying to you is that this time next month, this can't be the case. So, if, based on everybody's time, and Councilwoman Cobble, I'll yield to you on this because of, I do respect your work hours and, and what you're doing, and your knowledge, I'm willing to bring council back for just a separate session on this. I'm okay with it, I'm, because I've heard enough today where I'm satisfied with a certain option. I, I, I am. Let's be clear, I don't want to be taxed, so I'll put my position out front. I'll, I'll turn in these receipts, Jack, you know. So, have, you know, having said that, now, Councilman Turner, based on Mr. City Attorney, you know, how do we, how do we, you know, go to a, another time to be able to do this without bringing the whole thing to the ground?
We're only talking about one agenda item, is that right? I mean, even if we're talking about a deferral, we're talking about just one, one item, which is item seven, is that correct? Eleven, I'm sorry, make, thanks.
Item eleven.
And, and, and before you move to that, I mean, if, if that's the direction you're going, I, you know, I do, I guess, I, well, I defer, because at this point in time, you know, I'll wait for your motion, and then we can have a discussion on it after there's gonna be a motion, but otherwise, I would certainly say that there is room now that we can deal with this from outside of the charter. So, meaning that we do not have to have a charter amendment to deal with this particular issue. However, we would have a charter amendment to deal with what the attorney Curry has brought up here lately, which would be to remove a certain language from the charter that, that addresses the allowances and the reimbursements.
Councilman Turner, I'll take your motion.
Move to defer this item to the next regular meeting.
No, no, no.
I see. I don't know.
I let you open the cage for you, and you're scratching my eyeballs out.
But, and, and, and in reality, that would be the only chance you'll have to vote on it, either at a special call meeting-
Well, exactly, so don't, don't specify the language, not telling you how to do, not do your motion.
That's what it amounts to. Well, we had talked about deferring this to the next work session. That's the first step. Okay, so I'll stop it there. Move to defer to the next work session.
I second it.
It's been promptly moved in second, and councilman, with all due respect, I'm going to amend your motion. I move that we defer these items to the next special call session.
Because the work session is right after this.
Because work session, we, we won't have time to do it in work session. The next session is a work session, we're getting ready to go in the next session, right?
There are two more for the next meeting. We got two more items. There are two more work sessions.
This, this month?
Yeah, one after this meeting, and the next one is before the next meeting.
The next one is next month?
No, it's the 20th.
August 20th.
It's three, it's three weeks from now. What, what I'm saying to you, councilman, my substitute motion is that the, we call a special call meeting for it. We call a special call meeting for it, so that you can have time to get their schedules together, and we don't dedicate it to a, a, a certain place down the road.
I hope the parliamentarian can straighten that out, and that is that you give a date uncertain to a call meeting.
Well, I, that, that wasn't my substitute motion. My substitute motion was to move, to have this next, these items moved to a special call meeting. You said workshop, I said, you know, special call meeting.
Well, the, the work sessions have specific dates, a call meeting for which you haven't given a date to yet.
That is correct, because I need to know, I need to know her schedule. We need to know how we can, because this is the catalyst of it, of, of it, of it here.
Yeah, but I told you where I stand, so you don't really need me.
No. Well, you, you, we do need you, because you'll come back and vote no, even after we do it.
Before it both carries, rather than mine.
Well, if, if we're gonna negotiate, if we're gonna do this together, I'm not trying to get to indecision, I'm trying to get to a yes. And I'm, I'm okay with whatever that yes is. But I don't, I don't want to arm wrestle, and then it's a tie.
Once you all look at your calendars and say, when would, when would, could you meet again, all right, and do that? Now, I'm also gonna tell you that I'm not here on the 20th.
Oh, baby, so that even more so that-
But you all, but you have, but you have Mr. Denmark here, and he's fully aware of what's going on, so it's not, I'm not, I'm not, you know, my presence somehow doesn't seem to help.
But, I mean, we can, can, if we, if we just deferred it, then can't, can't we get together, talk about it in between, and then when we come up with an answer, we can either call a special call meeting and pass it, or we know we have the answer for the 20th, you put it on the agenda for the 20th, and you pass it, but we've already had all the discussion in between.
Actually, council, that's what I was trying to get to.
Okay.
And so, that's why, Councilman Turner, I did a substitute for your motion, because I don't want it hard set for a specific workshop or, or, or council day. I want, I want to make this before then, I want to make it before the 20th.
So, can we not just defer for further discussion, and just leave it there?
We can, but then you got to make a substitute motion on that, because he's made a motion, and his motion has been second.
I can do.
Yep, his motion has been moved in second, so you have to make a substitute motion. See, I made a substitute motion, it was not second, so it dies on this table.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, he's dead. All right, now.
Just make a motion to move it to-
What's the motion on the table?
There's a motion on the floor.
Is to take it to the next work session.
What's your motion, George?
The motion was to move it to the next regular council meeting, which would be the 20th. No. Yeah, and I think it's- And, and, and then it was suggested that we do it at the next work session, which follows this one, but I pointed out that there are two work sessions before the next regular meeting on the 20th. The motion, okay, the motion is to move it to the next regular council meeting for decision.
Just in a second.
I second it.
Properly moved in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Who's in the next? You can get that, that's your card.
We'll get the answer, though, before then, so we know when the meeting comes, on the agenda, we're good to go. We shouldn't have any discussion about it on the 20th, we should be moving right through it.
$10 to a donut.
Right. No, even more.
I promise you that donut, it won't be for me.
I know where it's gonna be.
No, that's not-
Okay, did you get it right, clerk? Madam Clerk?
Everybody voted, motion carried?
Yes.
Okay. Could you go back to number 10, please? That's where this attorney pulled that off the agenda, but you all adopted it on agenda. Can I get a motion to take it off the agenda from the council? Because you all adopted it with the agenda.
Uh, okay, so, council, for number 10, I need a motion to remove that item.
I move that we remove item number 10, the ordinance to amend the charter for the provision of the proposed operating budget and capital budget for the issuing fiscal, issuing fiscal year, I can't read.
Uh, okay.
No, we're just removing it from the-
That's correct, all right.
Second.
Motion on the table?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item removed.
Number eight and nine are just discussion only.
Well, just tell me-
You approved number seven, eight and nine was just discussion, which would have gone into the resolution.
That's right.
And you removed item number 10 from the agenda.
Right.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or does it carry?
So, we'll need one for number 11, then.
That's what, that's what he just did.
Just made a motion to defer to move number 11 to the next regular-
There you go.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you, council. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, mayor, just really quickly, just wanted to make everyone aware that the city has launched our online services for planning and zoning, so now planning and zoning applications cannot be received online. Just want to make that quick announcement. And also, I did want to address one comment that was made during public comment in regards to the road construction. Mr. Jordan and I are actually meeting with the Public Works Director with DeKalb County this afternoon, and that's one of the topics on our list, so I want to let you, the council is aware that we are, we'll be having that conversation with the county, so.
Let's see here, Mr. City Attorney?
For those of you who are not aware of it, Ms. Macheski-Preston had a baby boy.
Oh, wow!
Did she name him Jimmy?
It's a lot to be said about that, Doc, councilman.
She named him Jimmy, huh? Preston. His name is Preston.
Oh.
All right.
So, and also, as I mentioned earlier, we've prepared a memorandum of a summary of the charter timeline dates, which will be distributed to you. I would suggest that you keep it as, along with your charter, as your, as a permanent document for you to refer to, because it'll, it'll clear up a lot of what we had discussed, particularly as it related to the financials and budget items that, that we discussed that's there. We continue to work down our list of, of finishing the city code and adopting those ordinances and preparing those. The comment about litigation and making it available to the website, I think, you know, I see no issue in, if the city has been sued, I see no issue in publishing that and putting that on the website. If you, if you choose to do so, I don't see any reason not to, because it's all public information, anyway. As far as any correspondence or anything relating to that, no, but as far as the actual litigation itself, I think that, that would be fine. As far as threatened litigation goes, I, while that is a fact, I, I hold my opinion as to whether or not that should be put on the website or not. The other side of it is, is the question would come down that if it is available for inspection under open records, which I am not confident that it is, but I want to research that issue, then I may come back to you and say, yes, if, if it's subject to open records, then why not put it out there? But that's one thing that I want to look at before I come back with you as far as an opinion regarding that one item that's there. So, that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Right. Councilwoman Adoma?
Um, yes, just a quick notification that tomorrow morning at the Hilton at 9:00 a.m., we're sponsoring a Smart Innovative City Breakfast Seminar, and we do have lots of great speakers on the panel, and it is a free event, you do have to register, and everyone here is invited. Also, I wanted to add, to read, let me find it. I did request an update from Commissioner Marita Johnson on the Laithonia Industrial Extension Project, which is essentially the road, and I'll just read the one paragraph I got back. For the benefit of the audience and the mayor, it says, "The original plans for the waterlines have been changed as of May 22nd. DeKalb County Transportation is sending DeKalb County Watershed Management a summary of the various changes today, which would have been July 20th, so that they can better review the contractor's change order requests. Once the change order is approved, the contractor will be able to move forward with the construction again. The expected date of completion is between February or March of 2019. We'll continue to keep you updated, and if you need further information or have any questions, feel free to call Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson."
All right, we're good, councilwoman?
I'm good.
All right. Councilman Turner?
Just to announce that tomorrow evening at 6:30 p.m., you're all invited to Town Hall Meeting for District Four at Big Miller Grove, a missionary Baptist church on Miles Fowler Way. That's tomorrow night, 6:30, Big Miller Grove, District Four, Town Hall Meeting.
All right, Councilman Klein?
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Mayor. Our monthly community leadership meeting is every Saturday, every second Saturday of the month. It's at Fairfield Baptist Church in Laithonia, it's on Stone Mountain and Laithonia Road, it's in their education center, and it starts at 10 o'clock. Also, I just want to remind more council than anybody else in record, in regarding to the RFP and RFQ for the particular company that we had mentioned, the information that was sent to us and by city manager and staff, there is a big warning at the top of the page that says that this document contains trade secret information of QuickSec Solutions and may only be viewed by authorized person. Unauthorized viewing or disclosure is strictly prohibited and may result in serious legal consequences. My point is, is that the, the information that was shared with us was just for us, so just in case inadvertently are shared with our constituents, we might want to be careful. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to invite everybody to our monthly community breakfast, which will be held on August 11th at 9 o'clock at the Greater Travelers Rest House of Hope. This time, we'll be introducing our newly elected officials-